All right, I'll call the October 22, 2020 Planning Commission meeting to order. And will everyone please stand? And Commissioner Rosin, we'll ask you to lead us in pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, staff, roll call, please.
All commissioners are present this evening.
Great, thank you. This is item four, public comments. This is the time where we take public comments on matters that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. And additionally, please call 949-270-8165 to provide public comment on non-agenda items. First, we'll go to the community room. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda matters? All right, and thank you. Anyone on the phone? Okay. And I'll move on to the next item, requests for continuances. Staff, are there any requests?
Mr. Chair, there are no requests for continuances.
Okay, consent items. We have three routine items. And the, again, if you want to comment on any consent items, please call 949-270-8165. And I believe we have some amendments from Mr. Moser on item one. Those are the minutes from the September 17, 2020, meeting. And we have item number two, the quartel trust encroachment. That's PA 2020-287. And then item number three is bear encroachment, PA 2020-288. And I will have any, if any commissioners have any questions or comments on that? And I do want to go to the community room for any public comments.
Thank you, Chair Wiegand, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jim Moser. I wanted to comment on items two and three, which are requests for encroachments along Tustin Avenue into the public right-of-way. I realize this is a pattern of development that has been allowed frequently in Newport Heights. I don't think it's a good pattern of development. I would question why you're approving it and allowing it to expand. In our city, we have fairly generous setbacks and height requirements for what can be built in the setback areas. People usually can't do much of anything in the public right-of-way. The reason for those regulations is to give our public streets a sense of open, openness, open space when we go down them. This area of Tustin Avenue, like much of Newport Heights, doesn't have sidewalks. The people there have taken it upon themselves, it seems, not only to take away the setback and develop that, but also to want to take away the public right-of-way, which they're doing here. Item two is to build a fairly low fence, privatizing the public right-of-way. Item three, I think, is even more problematic, and I don't know, I don't see in the staff report how you're dealing with this. If you look at the illustration, it's on page 82. It shows the existing condition there. You will see that the homeowner has not only built a wall of nearly the maximum height up to the, what would practically up to the roadway, completely using up the public right-of-way, but in addition to that, they've built a hedge behind this, which appears to be almost as tall again as the wall. So they've completely screened in their front yard. This is a pattern of development we normally see only at a corner house, where one of the yards is allowed to be enclosed in that way, since they're both on the side. I saw nothing in the staff report if the hedge is going to be removed, or how the public is going to be able to see that public area at all. So I find these somewhat problematic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Any other comment? All right, anyone on the phone? Okay. All right, I'll see if there's a call for a motion in a second to approve the minutes first. Mr. Moser did provide some edits.
I'll make a motion for approval on that with Mr. Moser's edits.
Now, second. All right, call the vote.
Raise your hand.
Okay, and then item number two. Do we have any commissioners want to make a motion? Commissioner Kinning?
Yes, staff, tell me about the minimum width in that for ADA's walkway.
I think we'll have a traffic engineer, Tony Bryant, answer those questions. Thank you.
Okay. The minimum width typically would be 36 inches. We'd prefer 48 inches, but the absolute minimum would be 36 inches.
And here we have less than that, don't we?
Of what they're showing on their property.
Right.
Right. And in the case of Newport Heights, as was mentioned, there really are no sidewalks. For the most part, there's small pieces here and there. And there's no, the city has no plans to put sidewalks on most of the streets, or pretty much all the streets in Newport Heights. So that's one of the reasons why, when we've looked at these encroachments, we haven't had too much objection to them.
While you're there, what is, and I've built a lot of things, what's white concrete versus natural? Is there some pigment they put in it?
I would guess, I don't know.
Okay, just curious. What if somebody wanted steplights? No, vertically in the steps so people don't trip? Is that allowed in the, we have a section on lighting in the right-of-way.
Typically, no. We wouldn't allow lighting within the concrete, within the step itself, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone want to take a stab at, all right, Commissioner Lowry?
Yeah, I just really have a quick question, probably for Yolanda or Jim. Just when we write these agreements, you know, I feel like what they're requesting's in line with the current community and how things are. But speaking a little bit to what Mr. Moser brought up, and as you look long-term out, 30 years, 40 years out, where you're looking at the city may want to do some widening or sidewalk, widening of the street or sidewalks, just these agreements are written to such where 30 years from now, there's not going to be a prescriptive easement, you know, case or anything like that, that homeowner could bring up. And just, not obviously in this jurisdiction, but other jurisdictions, I've kind of been burned on those type of things that just kind of show up. Just a question of how that's written, and we're real protective on that that situation can't come up if there's ever a time where we want to widen the street, sidewalk, et cetera.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lowry. Certainly, that is within the realm of possibilities. We do make clear in the agreement that it is not a property right, not a property interest, and that it's subject to being withdrawn from the city.
Commissioner Kinning. Oh, you were, oh, any other commissioners want to comment or make a motion? All right, I'll make a motion to approve both items. I don't know, staff, can I go ahead and do both of those, or are we doing one at a time?
You may. I mean, typically, we approve entire consent together, so it's going to take two or three to get them.
All right, yeah, I'll move forward to approve agenda item number two and three. Do I need to read out anything, or can we just go ahead? Okay. I'll second. Okay, moving on to the public hearing items. This is item number four, AT&amp;T Small Cell, SLC 0902, appeal, PA 2019-113. The site location is public right-of-way, city street light number SLC 0902, at this, at the northwest corner of 38th Street and Lake Avenue. Again, if you want to comment on this item and you're watching this on TV, please call 949-270-8165, and please mute your television when you're connected. All right, staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Good evening, Chair Wiegand, Planning Commissioners. Ben Zadiba, Senior Planner with the Planning Division. I'll provide you a brief overview of the project. You do also have a presentation from Mr. Jim Moser, the appellant, and AT&amp;T, the applicant in this case. So I'll try to fly through mine so you can get to theirs pretty quickly. So just to give you some background, I wanted to frame the city's review of small cell and wireless telecommunications facilities in general. It's largely limited by federal law. We can only primarily focus on aesthetics, land use, and environmental impacts. One thing that's notable, we cannot focus on potential concerns with RF emissions. That is one comment that comes up quite frequently in public hearings, and we cannot base any decisions on that component. So in February of 2019, City Council authorized a master license agreement with New Singular Wireless for use of city-owned streetlights. That did not give them a vested right to use it, rather, it set a rent and fee schedule for those streetlights. So before you is the coastal development permit to effectively implement that streetlight installation. In May of 2020, the zoning administrator approved a minor use permit for an installation at this streetlight. However, it was later determined that coastal development permits are required for small cell installations, as they are not exempt from Title 21. And therefore, staff brought it back to the zoning administrator in August for approval of a coastal development permit. And subsequently, Mr. Moser did file an appeal, primarily citing concerns with insufficient site analysis, that is, alternative sites analysis, rather, and also the contention that this is potentially a prohibited location under Title 21. So just to familiarize you with the site, I wanted to show you the location. It is circled in red. That is street light number SLC 0902. And I highlighted the parks, those will all come up later, but I wanted to kind of orient you in case you've been to one of them. Obviously, the most prominent landmark there is the Newport Island Bridge, which you can see a car crossing it there, just east of the site. In terms of zoning, you have all residential and a little bit of parks and recreation. The one thing I wanted to note here that's interesting, I'm going to change the colors up on you. So all the red are prohibited locations for wireless telecommunications facilities. You can't cite them on single-family or two-family residential lots. You could put it in the park, potentially, that's 38th Street Park. However, our parks and recreation folks typically don't like to see those proposals because they're not really an amenity for the public in a park. I did highlight the street in yellow because I wanted to highlight that this is within the road that is paralleling the sea. And this is important because, as Mr. Moser will tell you, the prohibited locations list between the first road paralleling the sea, and that's the first public road paralleling the sea and the sea, in this case, you have it within the road, and therefore, it is not a prohibited location. It also is replacing an existing streetlight in kind, in the same location with a wireless facility on top of it. So the applicant's request is to remove that streetlight and replace it in the same location with the same luminaire height, which, for the public and for your ratification, the luminaire height is the light source itself, so in essence, that will not change. The height increase will go from 21 feet to 27 feet 6 inches, which is notable because that's still under the 29-foot height limit for residential structures in the area. The antennas are all enclosed within a 12-inch diameter shroud, and all the equipment will be either within the pole itself or vaulted below grade. This type of installation is a Class III, which is public right-of-way. It requires a minor use permit, which, as I mentioned, has been approved and is effective at this point in time. There were no appeals filed. But it also requires a CDP, and that is the application that was appealed, and that is what's before you tonight. So in terms of design, once again, I'm highlighting the luminaire. As you'll see, that's not changing with this proposal. That luminaire height is supposed to stay the same, and in fact, it's conditioned to stay the same if this were to move forward. Here's an example of a rendering for you. This is existing view. You'll see there is the proposed view. So once again, the luminaire height is not supposed to be changing. I did my best to overlay that for you to give you an idea. So one thing staff considers as part of this review is the alternative sites analysis. That burden is on the applicant to provide that analysis, and staff is charged with reviewing the analysis and making sure that it makes sense and it is accurate. So in this case, I'll step through each of those because that is the main contention of the appeal. So the first alternative site is on the opposite corner at 38th Street and River Avenue. You can see it's pretty stark. There's no landscaping to buffer it. It is within the view of that private residence, although we do not protect private views, it is very close to the residential neighborhood. And the most important thing is the dimension between the pole and that curb is less than three feet, which, as you just heard from our traffic engineer, is not sufficient for ADA access. Although the existing and replacement pole would be substantially the same in dimensions and diameter, it is not allowable to replace that structure with a new structure when it is essentially non-conforming due to that ADA access requirement. That is not to say that the city is precluded from routine repair and maintenance on that So alternative site number two is southwest of the proposed site, and that's at the corner of 37th Street and Lake Avenue. And although this one does have at least three feet between it and the fence, it is less than four feet, and it also is not softened by any landscaping features, and is also very close to the residence. I believe it is 11 feet from that residential structure. So once again, it is very close. The last and final alternative site that was explored is alternative site number three, is at the corner of 39th Street and River Avenue. And similar to the first alternative site, it's far less than three feet between it and the residential wall. So the ADA component is the major problem in this case again. So although it does have the palm trees that could be seen as a softening feature, it still is very close to the residence and, in fact, does not comply with ADA requirements. So very important for coastal development permits in the, in this case, is the visual analysis. And I just wanted to show you the definition of a public view that's taken directly from Title 21 in the municipal code. So it focuses primarily on bodies of water, things like landmarks, bluffs, canyons, everything that you would imagine would be beautiful within the coastal zone, and it does not mean an unobstructed panorama of those features. So I'll leave that definition there for you, but I wanted to show you a vantage point from Newport Island Park, which is the only identified viewpoint in that map 4-3 as referenced in the definition. You can't really see it, but it is, that is the light pole circled in yellow. And as you'll notice, the, it blends into the residential backdrop of the development. And once again, because the pole height overall with the shroud on top will not exceed 29 feet, it's not going to appear out of character in the neighborhood against that residential backdrop. And as stated in the definition, it's not going to impact the view of the body of water or anything that is part of the beautiful aspect of that viewpoint, looking down across the canal. Another view that staff looked at is from a park, a little parklet. It's the Lake Avenue Park. And as you can see, the view looking towards the pole itself is not really the view that you're interested in from this park location. You're going to be sitting on the benches, you're going to be viewing the canal. At that point, the streetlight itself is going to be behind your vantage point. It's not going to be impactful to any views from that park. That park is also not identified or designated in the CLUP as a designated public viewpoint. Although not required, the applicant did provide coverage maps to demonstrate why this is a good location for their network. The applicant, as I said, will have a presentation and can't talk more about how small cell works and how it's different from a larger macro facility that you'd see on a building. But basically, they would be improving their coverage in the immediate area, with the green being the most coverage that they could possibly have in that area. So in terms of findings, the most important part is it's consistent with the local coastal program and implementation plan. It's on a city-owned streetlight, and it's being replaced in kind. It's not impeding public access whatsoever because it's in a parkway. It's part of the roads system, and it's not going to make the sidewalk any more narrow. It's not going to be negatively impacting any public view, as I just described with the visual analysis, and it's not within any sensitive area. As I mentioned, a minor use permit was approved, so it is consistent with the zoning code and the general plan, and it is visually compatible with the neighborhood, as we just explored, as well as compliant with all the Title 21 wireless facility standards. So as I usually like to do, I wanted to point your attention to some of the conditions of approval. This just basically assures you that if you were to approve the project tonight, it's going to look like what you're seeing before you. So there's a lot of it that talks to the pole design, the pole location. We require a height certification to make sure that it's shot by a licensed surveyor and that all the elevations match what you see in the plans. Very important is that they would be required to maintain that antenna facility so that it looks nice as it can. And then also, a planning inspection is required prior to finaling that building permit to make sure that it looks exactly like what we're seeing on these renderings. So with that, staff's recommendation is that you conduct a de novo public hearing. In other words, you're not tied to the zoning administrator's decision on the CDP. You find the project is exempt from CEQA, and that you adopt a resolution to approve the coastal development permit. If you were to go that route, I do have a couple corrections I just want to note on the resolution for the record. So as Mr. Moser pointed out to me kindly in an email, I mistakenly omitted an additional condition of approval that the zoning administrator added, and I carried over condition of approval number 35. And this is all in the draft resolution in your packet. So 35 would be strict, and it talks about private landscaping, that's not applicable to this project. And instead, we would add condition of approval number 38, which I'm just going to read briefly into the record. It states, "No demolition or construction materials, equipment debris, or waste shall be placed or stored in a location that would enter sensitive habitat, receiving waters or storm drain, or result in impacts to environmentally sensitive habitat areas, streams, canals, the beach, wetlands, or their buffers." So that is added just to protect us with best management practices when they are constructing that pole if it gets approved, so that nothing enters the canal or sensitive waters. That does conclude my presentation. As I said, the appellant has a presentation, and so does the applicant. I'm available for questions as well.
Great, thank you, Ben. Commissioners, do you have any questions to ask for staff at the moment? Commissioner Kinning.
Sorry, just a couple little ones here. Do these new antennas or cell sites make any noise, vibrate, emit anything, or is it just silent?
I'll probably let the applicant address that more in detail.
That's fine. Are they going to, they're taking down the old light standard, putting in a new one, correct?
That's correct.
What, is there a temporary light going in to keep that area lit?
No. I don't, I don't believe that's the case, but the applicant may know more than I do about that.
All right, all right, then we'll ask them how long it, how long it'll be down. And I noticed, by the way, does AT&amp;T pay a fee to the city for using our streetlight?
Yeah, so that is identified by the master license agreement, which went to council in February of 2019. That outlined a fee of schedules, a schedule of fees and rents.
All right, so we are collecting. And I noticed on this one and the next one, no signs are allowed on the pole. Does that include those surf stickers that we see all over the place?
If that's your pleasure, we could do that, Commissioner.
Nah, just curious. They seem to be a magnet for those. Thank you.
Okay, I'll ask commissioners to report any ex parte communications, starting with Commissioner Elmore. None?
None.
None.
Some email correspondence with members of the public, but nothing with the applicant.
None for me.
None for me.
No for me. Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Staff, can you just let us know the process on this, since we don't usually do appeals, and it's the applicant that will go first? That's AT&amp;T, and then the appellant, Mr. Moser, will go after that, correct?
That's correct.
All right, and then is there a time limit that either of them have to adhere to, or a process in that sense?
That's really to your discretion, Chair.
Okay, so maybe if, since we have a heavy item, 10 minutes per side? That seems fair. That gives each an opportunity to go with that. So AT&amp;T, you're up.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Wiegand and commissioners. My name is Corey Autry, and I work for Wireless Policy Group, but I'm here tonight representing AT&amp;T on this permitting matter. And we also have Judy Woolen from AT&amp;T's External Affairs Department, and Franklin Orozco from AT&amp;T's Design Vendor, representing here this evening. So I just have a brief presentation. It's really just a general presentation, and then I will call Franklin up to go over more specifics on this location and the alternatives. So we do have a presentation, next slide. Okay, I don't know, is someone talking inside, or can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. There is a slight echo, commissioners. Is everyone okay with this?
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, great. So I know Ben already outlined this somewhat in his presentation, and thank you, Ben, for the thorough presentation. I just thought it was important, maybe before we go into too much detail, just level-set a little bit and talk about the history. We were working with the city for quite a while. We first submitted both projects that you'll hear this evening on, in June of 2019, and in working with staff back and forth to try and make sure we complied with everything. We were deemed complete on the application earlier this year. And as Ben stated, we did go to ZA hearing on this specific project in May, and the other project you'll hear in April. And at that time, we did receive approval for the minor use permit, and there were no appeals that were filed for the projects. So staff since then determined that a coastal development permit would be required, and so we had to go back to the zoning administrator for a hearing, which we did on August 27. And it's at that hearing that we actually ended up getting appealed, and that's why we're before you this evening. So, but overall, just to reiterate, we've been working with the city for almost a year and a half on the project. We were here a few months ago for another matter, and at that time, I went over a more extensive presentation on small cell, and so I'm not going to do that. But I just wanted to provide a couple of quick reminders that, you know, small cells really are just small equipment with an antenna. And in the case of Newport Beach with our 4G deployment, most of these that you'll see have the radios and the antenna enclosed within the structure that's on the light pole. So small cells are really a targeted solution. They're not your traditional macro cell site that covers a very wide area. It's really specific. You're going to see it deployed where customers are prone to experience connectivity, sometimes heavy populated areas, sometimes where we can't get macro cell sites. You'll see these deployed. Many of the ones that you're seeing initially, though, are really for what we call an infill project. It's to fill a small gap in coverage in the macro network that exists. And sometimes, you'll see us deploying small cells to actually add capacity to the existing macro network. Small cells help to bring the network closer to its users, and that's how we're able to provide the improved service and data and density on our network. And so the ideal way of bringing this closer to the user is to utilize the existing infrastructure within the public rights-of-way. Using the infrastructure in the public rights-of-way also is a way for AT&amp;T and other carriers to provide a consistent design as far as antenna heights and aesthetics go. Next slide. Oh, that was the one I just talked about a little bit. So on this slide, I just wanted to reiterate, and I know you're very familiar with this, and so is your attorney, but there are a number of federal and state provisions that support AT&amp;T's rights to be in the public rights-of-way, one of which is the California Public Utilities Commission, Section 7901. And this is a statewide franchise to place poles and install equipment in the public rights-of-way for telephone corporations. rights of way for telephone corporations, of which AT&amp;T is. Also, there's the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996, which provides access to public right-of-way on a competitively neutral and non-discriminatory basis. And then, most recently, is the FCC 2018 Infrastructure Order, which we all refer to in the industry as a small cell order. And it contemplates use of structures in the public right-of-way that are suitable to place small cells. And also, one thing that we need to deploy in the public right-of-way in utilizing cities' existing light poles is a master agreement. And I know Ben reminded you that we did enter into a master agreement with the city in February of 2019. And although that doesn't give us rights to do whatever we want, it is a step toward being able to deploy in the public rights of way once we receive our permit approvals. So just to reiterate, light poles in the right-of-way are ideal for this type of small cell technology, and AT&amp;T has rights to be in the public rights of way that they don't have to be on private property. So I just wanted to provide those reminders and call Franklin up now to go into any specifics needed on the alternatives for this location. I know Ben did a great job with that, but we also do have that as part of our presentation so we can reference the photos and talk a little bit about our thought process on how we determine the current location. So Franklin, come on up. Oh, and I know there were a couple of questions asked as far as noise. And as far as the noise goes, there are small fans in the radios, and so basically it would be compared to like a laptop fan that comes on if the laptop gets a little hot. So it's not anything that anyone would hear walking by a pole with the antenna or the radios up at the top of the pole. And as far as the construction piece and the timing of the light pole replacement and how long the light's out, I'll let Franklin talk a little more about that.
Good evening, Chairman, and Mr. of the Planning Commission, Franklin Orozco, M Square Wireless, representing AT&amp;T. So I'm not going to go too much into detail of the alternatives, but we're just going to flip through some of the slides. This is, you've seen this already in terms of the coverage that has been achieved by the proposed installation of that small cell. You know, primarily is to be able to infill that, that area with signal that is currently not strongly present. So there, as Ben mentioned, there were three alternatives that we looked at. For the most part, all of the alternatives have space limitation in terms of meeting ADA compliance, simply because the, the, the right-of-way sidewalk is slightly, it's very constrained. And so compared to the actual proposed location, we don't have that, those constraints. There's ample space there where we can have a buffer between the adjacent uses. It is a design that meets standards, city standards. It is designed as a stealth facility, which you can see would just be an add-on to the existing streetlight that will be painted to match the color of the, the concrete streetlight design. You can go through the next slides. So these are the three alternatives that we looked at again. As you can see, in summary, the, the main impediment utilized in these locations are primarily ADA compliance. That's about it for the, the alternative analysis. In terms of the questions that came up, for the temporary light, there, there is not a plan to put a temporary light at the moment. We have an understanding with Public Works that the replacement of this, the light will take approximately about 10 days to be able to come in and replace that. We have an ability to provide temporary lighting if necessary, and that would be in the form of a, a mobile temporary light that can, it's on a trailer, basically, that could be placed on, in the right-of-way if that's necessary. And in terms of vibration, as Corey mentioned, the, the equipment has cooling fans, but because the, the, the actual shroud itself also has perforated vents, it also uses passive ventilation. So those really don't kick in when, you know, there's extreme hot weather and the, the equipment is working at a maximum capacity. So I'm open to questions if you have any.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions to ask? Commissioner Kettig, did that get your, all your questions answered? Cool. Commissioner Rosine?
Do I have a question in regard to, how was this gap identified? How did you come up, how did you come up with the process of determining that this was a location that required this facility?
That is a, a technical aspect that the radio engineers, through the use of various types of software and also customer, customer calls or demands, radio testing of the area determine basically where the, the weak areas are. In, in this particular case, this is actually trying to provide additional coverage specifically to that area in, in, in the island as well, because there isn't really any other structures that can be utilized in this location, as Ben mentioned. So the, the, that's the process that we go through in terms of, you know, determining where a particular additional small cell would be needed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? Commissioner Kleiman?
Thank you. Could you address a couple of things that were mentioned in the appellant's latest letter here? The first one being the additional height of this cell site that goes on top of the pole. I know that we're replacing the old pole, but essentially, the extra height, the height difference between the old pole and the new pole. And second, the, what's my other? Well, I'll let you answer that question and then...
Sure. So the, the additional height, basically, you, you have a, a set of radios and antenna. The antenna sits on top of the, of the, the radios that are enclosed within, within that canister. So the, there's four radios that fit in there inside that. The shroud, which is on the, the lower part, and then the top part is the actual transmitting antenna itself. So basically, it's just that, that addition. It's a total of about, closer to about six feet in height difference.
Okay, yeah, I think the applicant, or, excuse me, the appellant was referencing a number, I think around eight feet, but I'm sure that you know better, since it's your design. The other question is about his mention of other, maybe older, small cell sites throughout the city that wrap around the existing pole rather than an add-on to the top of the pole like we're talking about here.
I've seen other designs in where you actually have radios that are attached on the outs, you know, the outer portion of the, the pole. They're, they're a lot more visible in terms of the profile. In this case, what you see is basically the same diameter, I suppose, same diameter pole itself that is, that's currently there, the, the streetlight, with the, a 12-inch diameter shroud on the top. So in, in the antenna, it sort of tapers down to about 10 inches. So overall, I, we believe that this is actually a, a design, a much more streamlined design that, you know, projects the, the existing vertical element of that streetlight rather than having to expand on, on both sides and, and above as well.
Thank you.
All right, any other commissioners' questions? I'll just ask, is this a 5G or a 4G?
This is part of our 4G implementation program.
Okay, great. And I'll ask for the appellant, Mr. Moser, to head on up and give your presentation, please.
Thank you, Chair Wiegand, members of the Planning Commission. You may be surprised, this is actually a new experience for me, making a presentation. I do not recall ever trying to make a PowerPoint presentation before, and I hope it will go smoother than I'm expecting. Before talking to the slides, I did want to make two points, first of which Commissioner Kleiman just touched upon. Small cells are not small and unobtrusive. I believe the figure I gave of eight feet is correct. Mr. Orozco, I think, was talking about how far it extends above the top of the luminaire, but the luminaire is above the top of the pole. So this is extending the pole a couple of feet, then adding another structure on top of that for a total of eight-feet-taller pole than it was before, and a rather large, quite visible structure sitting on top of a city's streetlight. In fact, I think, in my opinion, these are, and I will show you pictures at the very end of this presentation, I think more obtrusive than what we had 10, 20 years ago when macro cells were first being deployed on city's streetlights. Other point I want to make is that a coastal development permit is not the same as a minor use permit. You on the Planning Commission do not have as much experience, perhaps, as the zoning administrator with coastal development permits, but the obligation that the city has in approving these is to approve something under the Coastal Act, which means that we are trying to find something that makes our city attractive and desirable, not just to us lucky Newporters, but also to the public of California in general. And so to illustrate that, the first slide here is showing you the code. The city staff is very good about telling you their interpretation of the code. They rarely direct you to the code to actually see what it says. This is, and, and in our zoning code where the minor use permit is approved, we have a very similar code, but it's different, and the coastal development conditions are uniformly stricter. So the first slide is showing the section which tells you about prohibited locations. You'll see four things numbered near the bottom of the slide, and if we can go to the, those are in the zoning code. The next slide at the top is showing you two that are specific and only appear in the, in the implementation plan of the coastal plan. One is it's prohibited to put new telecom installations in environmentally sensitive habitat areas, wetlands, or bluffs. And the second, number six at the top of the slide, is that they cannot, new installations cannot be placed on a beach, and they cannot be placed between the first public road and the sea, with three exceptions, which the staff, I believe, agrees. None of those exceptions apply here. So there is a prohibition against putting new telecom sites between the first public road and the, and the first public road and the sea, to protect our coastal resources for all of California. And if we go to the next slide, what the first public road is, is actually defined. You'll see it in the middle of the slide there. As you might expect, you'll see point three. A road actually contains an all-weather surface open to motor vehicles. It's something that motor, cars drive on. It's open to them. If you go to the next slide, you will see the location, which you've seen a slide of before. Not only does that look like a beach, which is a location where they're not supposed to go, it's a little inside of the beach, I will admit that, in a kind of a planter structure. I think the average person looking at this would believe that that red curb there, which is avoiding people parking to block the view, the area between the red curb and us is what most people would call a road. That's where the cars travel. The proposed site is back behind this curb, behind the sidewalk, in the planter, next to the beach. I can not think of anyone who would not think that that location is not between the road and the sea, and that that was not the intent of the Coastal Act to protect that. And in fact, our city staff since May has been telling us that this location is between the first public road and the sea, and only on Monday are they now telling us it's not. And also, if you look at the city's GIS information, you will see that where the beach is has been designated actually as a city-owned parcel. And although it was not shown on Ben's map, I don't know where he got that, on our zoning, it's actually zoned R2. So we have some confusion there. In any event, even if this was not between the first public road and the sea, the Coastal Act is trying to protect views. So if we go to the next slide, I'll show you the design standards, which are stricter in Title 21, where this permit is being issued, than they were in Title 20, where the minor use permit was being. You'll see the first paragraph at the top of the slide is telling you that the facilities have to be designed to minimize visual impact of the facility, and one of the means by which that is accomplished is by its location. And then it goes on, and this cites another section, which is on the next slide, which is a further explanation of what we have to do to protect views. And hopefully, the commissioners are familiar with Title 21. Perhaps you're not. You will see the first line at the top says that your duty in approving these is to ensure that where feasible, we are enhancing, we are supposed to protect. Let me start it further in the sentence here. The approval you're giving tonight is to ensure that this project is cited, that is located, and designed to protect, and where feasible to enhance the scenic and visual qualities of the coastal zone. And so we go to the next slide. This is a view that the staff did not show you. That's the proposed location. To me, that is a very scenic coastal view, and you're being asked to put an eight-foot-tall structure, very obtrusive, on the top of that streetlight that is in the view. Somehow, that doesn't seem consistent with what you're supposed to be approving tonight. The next slide you've seen before is the coverage map supplied voluntarily by AT&amp;T. The big black dot is the location at the foot of the bridge. You may wonder why they're not wanting to go up River Avenue, because that's an area where, according to them, they don't have coverage. You'll see a little purple dot a little bit up and to the left of the big black dot. That is 39th Street. And if we go to the next slide, you've seen this location before. We're told the sidewalk there is very narrow, so somehow we have an ADA code that we might be violating if we put something here. We have a, like a, yeah, that's good. We appear to have a choice between violating the ADA code by putting something at this location, or violating our Coastal Act by putting something at a prohibited location. Between the two, I would think the city might find some creative solution where they could relocate this pole slightly, maybe pull out the sidewalk, do something. And as to the view, you saw the view looking at the bridge. The next slide shows you what the view looks like from up the street. That is the coastal view from this location. Where the flag is, you'll see the streetlight that's there. Putting something on top of that streetlight, at least to me, has much less effect than it proposed location, which is shown on... it proposed location, which is shown on, again, to remind you, on the following slide. The difference between the two, I think, is quite stark. Somebody used the term stark. We're asked to do this, where we could not do the other. Now, we've been told that the sidewalk is too narrow, and if we go to the next slide, that's the alternate location at 37th Street. This is alternative number one. The other was alternative number three. This, actually, we've been told, is feasible, and if we go to the next slide, that's what the coastal view looks like, looking down 37th Street at the Rialto Canal. I think it would be unfortunate to damage this view, so at least to me, the location on 39th Street, which requires some creative solution to the ADA problem, is clearly the most consistent location in terms of issuing a coastal development permit. This location is not as good, the proposed location is terrible. And as I promised at the beginning, I wanted, I think I have on the next slide, I'm going to show you the very first, I believe this is the very first, cell installation placed on a city streetlight probably 15 or 20 years ago. This is by the Back Bay Bridge. To the left is the Bay Shores Apartment Community. To me, that is less impactful than what we're hearing today. I believe this is a macro site. It has a big utility cabinet next to the hedge that's behind the bus stop, and it's a little more visible if you're looking from, at 90 degrees from this, because the antennas stand out a little bit. And then I'm going to show you on the next and almost last slide, a location that I believe was built in about 2008. This is on Superior, across the street from the Sunset View Park, looking down towards the coast. This is another location. If you look down the sidewalk, you'll see some metal plates. That's where the support equipment, which I think, I'm not sure of the terminology, this is a bigger radius-serving site. But again, at least to me, it's less impactful. And then I will show you the very final slide to remind the city staff of another difference between the Coastal Act and our zoning code, which is the Coastal Act has more rigorous noticing requirements. The site needs to be noticed throughout the pendency of the application, so all of California knows an application is in the works. That probably has been done. However, the city staff, whenever a hearing is held, not only is supposed to notify people who have asked to be notified, but everybody they knew was interested in the project. I'm not sure that they're actually doing that. Perhaps they need to read the code also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Commissioners, questions to Mr. Mosher? None at this time. So what I'll do is I'll open the public hearing, or sorry, take public comments on this item. So if you're watching remotely and want to provide comments, the phone number is 949-270-8165. And I'll go to the community room for public comments first.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess I can take this off to talk.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, my name's Dorothy Larson. I'm a resident of Newport Beach. And my understanding, for one thing, is that most of these issues have been brought up and discussed before. But in any case, especially in light of the current need for good connectivity, for education, for business, as well as the normal residence desire for good connectivity and communication, I really believe that this approval of these sites should be expedited. In addition to that, in looking at the slides just shown, as to the view issues, I had to look away from the view to look up to find where the antenna would go. So I really do not believe that these would be obtrusive, and I appreciate that. I believe that this should be, that we should move forward with getting some installations where we need them in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other in the community room? Okay, we'll go to the phone. All right, nothing on the phone. So I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Rosie?
This may actually be a question for the folks collectively AT&amp;T. Mr. Mosher showed us two different locations, one at Dover and PCH, and then the other over at off Superior, and mentioned that those were potentially macro sites. I don't know how to qualify that, but those facilities look very similar to what's being proposed. Is there any way to know that?
Well, unless my colleague Franklin is familiar specifically with those locations, I can only provide, based on history in the industry, the one that has the two-panel antennas at the top. Mr. Mosher did mention there's a large equipment cabinet that's off the right-of-way down the slope there. And so normally, a macro site is a very high-powered site. It has a very large radius of where the coverage goes to. And like we said, a small cell is a very targeted solution, so if that happened to be a small cell, it may only cover like 250 to 1,000 feet, whereas the macro may cover quite a ways up and down the road, like maybe a half mile or so. So the difference is in the power and the expanse of where it covers. So again, I can't talk specifically, I'm not familiar with those.
No, I appreciate that. I figure it's hard, from one little picture, to figure that out, so thank you for trying to answer the question. I guess this is more for staff. When we were looking at Mr. Mosher's report, he made reference to, and he was item six on his list, and that, in that list, what it was defining was what was an existing facility in the right-of-way. And I'm questioning whether a streetlight is considered an existing facility according to the Coastal Act, or if that's talking about an existing cell site.
Are you referencing his appeal statement that he provided, Commissioner Rosie?
Yeah, it was, it was in his presentation. I wrote it down as item six, so I apologize if we're...
Pull it back up, Brian. I'm going to try to pull that back up to make sure you don't misrepresent anything.
Maybe if you wanted time to come back to that, I understand.
Based on your description, I want to say it's talking about an existing wireless telecommunications facility in the right-of-way.
Okay, that makes sense. I just wanted to make sure we're saying the same thing. Thank you.
All right, any other commissioners for questions? Commissioner Klaus Vermaier.
Yeah, a question for Ben. There was a photo that Mr. Mosher showed with a different view that made the sidewalk adjacent to the proposed location look like it was pretty narrow. Is that sidewalk currently ADA compliant at the 36 inches?
No, it does not appear to be as such, and I don't believe it is out in the field. However, this location is off into the parkway, and that's the distinguishing character of the site.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Climon.
A question for staff. Have we followed these sorts of appeals at the Coastal Commission level at all, to get a feeling for how they are typically addressed and handled?
I wouldn't say staff, that's a good question, Commissioner Climon, but I wouldn't say staff follows the appeals that go to the Coastal Commission. However, I do know that Coastal Commission routinely exempts these types of facilities or waives the requirement for a coastal development permit. It's just that our specific Title 21 standards for wireless do not have the same exemptions as the Coastal Act and the Coastal Commission staff can employ. So in this case, we have to do a coastal development permit, whereas they could do a coastal waiver, and they routinely do that.
So is that something that staff is working on, trying to get an amendment to our LCP to include this kind of a waiver going forward, so that this process doesn't continue to be so laborious?
Yes, it's on our radar.
Got it. Well, I guess I'll just say in response to that, I think it's no question that we need this infrastructure. Obviously, we've been talking about this for some time, and as we heard and we know, AT&amp;T's been working on this for a long time, as the city with all the carriers, even though this is just playing catch-up with the old technology, not even the new technology. But I think we find ourselves, once again, in conflict with the Coastal Act, and I mean, I tend to agree with the appellant in this case in that there are some very strong points that this will get appealed to Coastal and get kicked right back. So I would hesitate to, knowing how much time the applicant and staff has put into this, I would hesitate to kick the can down the road and then just have it kicked right back and start all over again. It does seem like there's at least one other site alternative that was considered that doesn't have the same objections or problems that the one that we're talking about tonight does.
Thank you. Staff, if the commission were to look at alternative sites, it's my understanding that we would need to continue the item in order to have staff and AT&amp;T explore those, correct? We couldn't, from this position tonight, request alternative sites, correct?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Wagon. We have not noticed this item for the alternative sites, and so we would consider that sort of the, either the equivalent of denial, we would want to bring that back with a resolution that's supported by findings, and/or, you know, that would probably be the most appropriate approach there.
Okay, so Commissioner Climon, to your points, if, you know, that's the motion, or not motion, but directive that the commission has, it would be likely to explore other sites through a continuance, because it sounds like you weren't really interested in, you know, canceling, because you want to at least see some connectivity in the area, but maybe explore ideas of other locations in the area. But I guess we also have the option to support the recommendation from staff.
Yeah, obviously, I'm just one voice on this commission. However, I'm just saying, from where I sit, yes, I would love to see more of these small cell sites approved, although one thing that the applicant said that was a little bit surprising was the actual coverage, the benefit of the site being 250 to 1,000 square feet. That's a little concerning, because it's quite a lot of effort to get each one of these approved, as we are witnessing here. But just to clarify once again, I think that Mr. Mosher's reading of the local coastal plan or implementation plan is not incorrect, and I think it's of concern, and my opinion is that if we approve it here, that it will wind up back at, you know, getting kicked back again, and then we have to start all over. So I would, just, again, just my reading of it.
Sure, and then staff, just to guide us through on that. If we were to approve it tonight, the staff recommendation, then it would be appealed to the Coastal Commission, or would it be appealed to council?
Chair Wagon, there would be really two options. An appellant could appeal this to the city council, there would be a fee involved. The other option would be to, because there is that fee involved, they would be determined to be, have exhausted their administrative remedies, and they could appeal it to the Coastal Commission. So those are the two options there. Now, the Coastal Commission would review this on appeal, if it is appealed. And I think they would be looking at the same visual impact analysis we would be looking at and looking to see if it impacts the views significantly in the coastal zone. They may derive at a different opinion that we might have, and obviously, there's the code consistency question that Mr. Mosher has brought up. Again, staff, we believe that this is not within the, between the road and the right-of-way. You know, I suppose they could come up with a different conclusion, but we feel comfortable with our recommendation that it's consistent with the LCP.
And on a observation level on these types of appeals, Coastal usually sides with the carriers more so than the appeals, or is there really, it's kind of, just depends on each individual item?
Actually, it does depend upon each individual location. You know, in working with Coastal staff on these types of issues, you know, they really look to whether or not there would be any kind of visual impact analysis, and then if it has the potential to have a visual impact analysis, then they want to require a coastal development permit. Where they believe there isn't an impact, then they would exempt these types of facilities, and that's very common. But if it's in an area that's highly scenic, you know, they will require the visual analysis. We feel that we've gone through that analysis. It was duly considered by the zoning administrator and obviously by you folks here this evening, and it's obviously your decision this evening. And again, it's whether or not there really is a significant visual impact here, and if the commission feels that there is, then the course would be to deny it or to suggest a different location to the applicant, and then maybe they can bring that forward as a subsequent application. Again, we feel this is an appropriate location. The other locations have some issues with ADA, and we didn't feel that the canister on top of this really presented a significant visual detriment to the area. So that's the basis of our recommendation.
And then before I go back to the commission on one more thing, I'll ask the applicant one question, or not really a question, but, you know, we're going to have probably two options here, either to continue it and you could look for a new site, or you run the, you know, gamut through Coastal, because my experience in this is Mr. Mosher will likely appeal it to Coastal, so there's some significant time that's going to take for that. So, you know, do you have your druthers here? You can tell us before we, you know, probably are going to entertain a motion.
So I just wanted to bring up that we just, we went through another project that has already gone to the Coastal Commission and has already gone through the, through the period of the appeal notice. And that particular project is very similar to this project, where it's near the water as well. And I've worked with many other jurisdictions, again, as Ben mentioned, that the Coastal Commission has exempt all those other installations that we had next to the beach area. So at this point, I think we would like the commission to make a decision, and, you know, if it gets appealed eventually to the Coastal Commission, that is something that will, you know, that would be the route that we'll take.
Okay, great. Commissioners, you want to, any more questions? Yeah, Commissioner Climon.
I just have one more question. The alternative site that's located in the sidewalk, I guess I'm a little confused as to how that's not already an ADA issue, if that's the argument, right? Because the base of the pole isn't going to change, as far as I understand it.
Yeah, that's the correct understanding, that the bottom diameter will not change. The pole itself will get about a quarter of an inch thicker, which is nominal, of course, but the real issue is that you are taking down a structure that is existing, non-conforming, as us planter types would say, in that it's not providing that 36-inch clear path of travel for the ADA requirement. And as such, the Public Works Department would not allow for a voluntary replacement pole to essentially perpetuate that condition, if that makes sense.
So when the original pole was constructed, we did not have the ADA requirement, is that...
I didn't verify that for these poles, but it is very likely, given the age of the infrastructure.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, any other commissioner questions or motions?
This is more of a statement than anything. It seems to me like alternative three, which is the location that was identified as having an ADA issue, and yet wouldn't be, would be supported by the appellant. I guess in the future, it'd be a good opportunity to solve two problems if the, if the carrier was willing to enter into some sort of encroachment permit and fix the facility and make it ADA compliant, that would be great. So it's a statement, I don't know if I'm...
That's all. Commissioner Kettig.
I'm going to make a motion for approval. I feel if, wherever this is located, if there's going to be an appeal, they're going to appeal it. So, again, so I make a motion that we approve PA 2019-113 Coastal Development Permit, CD 2020-119.
I'll second. Mr. Chair, just to make her the motion, does that include the changes that staff presented?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. It was so long ago, I can't remember them.
Okay, call for vote. Okay. Moving on to the next item, this is item number five, AT&amp;T Small Cell, SLC 4653 Appeal, PA 2019-2000, or 115. Site location is the public right-of-way streetlight number SLC 4653 on the north side of Bayside Drive, approximately 900 feet northwest of El Paseo Drive. And again, if you are calling on this item over your phone, call 949-270-8165. Staff, please, your presentation.
Thank you, Chair Wagon. Commissioners, my name is Jocelyn Perez. I'm an assistant planner with the planning division. The item before you is a coastal development permit to allow the installation of a small cell wireless telecom facility on top of a city-owned streetlight along the north side of Bayside Drive, approximately 900 feet northwest of the intersection of Bayside Drive and El Paseo Drive. I know the last presentation gave a lot of information about small cell facilities, so I'll attempt to be brief in my presentation. Small cell technology is being widely deployed throughout the country and the globe. It's a solution to fill in the nooks and crannies and gaps in current service coverage. They are intended to work in conjunction with existing macro facilities. And I'd like to remind the commission that the city's review is limited by federal law. We can consider aesthetics, land use, and environmental impacts. So a little bit of background about the project and how we got here. As mentioned previously, in February of 2019, the city council authorized a master license agreement with New Singular Wireless, also known as AT&amp;T, for use of city-owned streetlights within the public right-of-way, assuming approval of a minor use permit. In April of 2020, this project went before the zoning administrator for approval of a minor use permit. That permit was approved by the zoning administrator. A call for review was attempted by this commission, but it was filed after the appeal period expired and the use permit became effective. After that approval, staff later determined that a CDP was required because these installations did not meet any of the exemptions that are called out in Title 21. The applicant revised their request to include the approval of a coastal development permit, and the item came back in front of the zoning administrator in August of 2020. At that hearing, the zoning administrator approved the subsequent request for a coastal development permit. Mr. Mosher filed an appeal of that decision citing an alleged inadequate consideration of alternative locations or co-location. So this is the project area. The city-owned streetlight, SLC 4653, is located within that vegetated parkway. I'd like to point out that this vegetated parkway is on the landward side of Bayside Drive. Bayside Drive is actually the first public road paralleling the sea. It's located in between the harbor and a very steep slope, that's a bluff, with residences This map shows the surrounding land uses. As you can see, they're primarily residential. We have multi-unit across the street on the harbor side of Bayside Drive, and then we have single-unit residential on the landward side of Bayside Drive. This request would allow the removal of the existing city streetlight and the installation of a new light with the small cell technology in the same location. The luminaire height, which Ben explained earlier, is the actual light source would remain in the same location that it currently is. And that is important because, as you're traveling along Bayside Drive, all the luminaire heights line up and there's a visual order. So we did not allow that to change as part of the installation of the small cell facility. The overall height will increase from 21 feet 1 inches to the top of the antenna at 27 feet 5 inches. And that 21 feet is the top of the luminaire. The antennas and the radio equipment will be enclosed in a shroud, as to be less visually intrusive, and all equipment will be contained either within the pole or below grade. Here I have for you a drawing of the existing city streetlight. I have the luminaire highlighted there. And here we have the small cell facility. I've pointed out the height increase, so you can see there's the pole with the facility. The luminaire height stays the same. Next, I have a more, a more helpful visual of what is existing in the field today. As you can see, there's this hillside behind the existing streetlight that's considered a bluff. It's currently very vegetated, and it's installed by the homeowners above. It provides a softening, if you will, of the, of the existing streetlight and any proposed Now I show the facility on top of the streetlight. As you can see, the, this, this significant grade differential between the R1 residences above and Bayside Drive helps put the facility in a location where it's not directly in front of anybody's residences. It's in an existing, developed streetscape, where there's already storm drains, utility cabinets, and other streetlights. It's a part of the streetlight system. I've included a coverage map to kind of demonstrate why this location, as you can see, along Bayside Drive, that's in that, that blue circle there, there's, there's very little And with the installation of the small cell, we see an increased coverage through there. Next, I have the applicants provided an alternative sites analysis. And as you can see here, we have four different sites that the applicant considered. They, they all follow Bayside Drive. As it begins to curve, we can see alternative site number four is slightly out of line with the, the other sites that were considered, and I'll, I'll touch a little bit more upon that soon. All right, I want to show you first alternative site number one. As you can see, that is in front of a really nice-looking coastal bluff. As earlier men, as mentioned in the previous presentation, we have policy to ensure that these, these views, these coastal resources are not negatively impacted by any new development. So this site was not seen as an improvement over the proposed site for a number of reasons, including there's some, some issues with retaining walls down at the bottom and the requirement to grade into the bluff if, if a small cell were to be placed there, if the, the streetlight were to be taken down and reinstalled. Alternative site number two, unfortunately, there's a temporary construction fence in front of it, so it obscures the view of a little retaining wall that bounds the streetlight on three sides. It's a similar situation to alternative site number one, where to take down the pole and install the new pole with the required below-grade support equipment would require grading into that hillside behind it. And as you can see now, the hillside behind it is a continuation of that coastal bluff. It's got a little more vegetation on it here, so you don't get to see the rocks as much, but it definitely still is that resource that we don't want to grade into in our coastal program, has policies that require us to respect the natural topography of resources like that. Alternative site number three, seen here, has, it features a, the same little low retaining wall on three sides, which would require the applicant to conduct mu, just more grading, more, more intrusive, and it's just, it's less feasible. Here's a, here's a view of that little retaining wall. It kind of helps demonstrate what I'm talking about, the need to take that down and grade into the hillside. Here's alternative site number four, and this is the site that has received the most attention in, in the form of public comment. And also, Mr. Mosher spoke about this site at the zoning administrator hearing. There's the, the belief that because the, the abutting hillside is disturbed with a solar panel structure, it would make sense to, since it's already blighted, to put the facility there. However, because there is a solar panel structure there and, and not the nice landscaping as in the proposed site, there's less, there's less destruction, there's less visual interest. Facility there would, would pop out a little bit more. And also, as I mentioned earlier, alternative site number four occurs at a curve in Bayside Drive. So if you're, if you're driving northbound on Bayside, that's going to be right in your view the, the whole time you're going up there. Or if you're a cyclist and you're in the bike lane there, you know, that's just, that's much more in your line of sight than these alternative sites three, the proposed site two and one, which are off to the side. So staff was able to make the findings that this is consistent with the LCP. This site does have an effective minor use permit, and so in that instance, the findings required under Title 20 were able to be made. The proposed facility blends in with the existing streetscape. It's in a large vegetated parkway. And I believe, I forgot to point out earlier, that there's, there's no sidewalk in this location. So there's a less issue, there's no ADA issues, like with the telecom that came before this one, as well as there will be no negative impacts to the public's ability to access the coast, because there's no public access on that side. Additionally, this telecom facility complies with the standards for telecoms that are in Title 21. It's less than 35 feet tall. It's within a pole, and the support equipment is underground. And we performed a visual analysis, as well as considered the alternative sites. So staff's recommendation is to conduct the de novo public hearing, and that's where you're not bound to the, the hearing that was conducted by the zoning administrator earlier. This is a new hearing. Also, find the project exempt from CEQA and adopt the resolution to uphold the zoning administrator's decision and approve the CDP. If you choose to do that, I do have a correction to the draft resolution. It's, oh, pardon me. It's on to handwritten page 23. So in finding B, fact one, it reads, "As discussed, in fact, in fact, in support of finding A.5." That should read A.9. So I'd like to, to update that. And I'm available for any questions.
Great, thank you so much. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, and, oh, Commissioner Klein, or Commissioner Kettig?
Yes, Jocelyn, a very good presentation, by the way. They mention alternative site four does not meet the applicant's business objection. What does that mean?
While I'm sure they can comment a bit further on what the business objective is, I do know that there are conflicts in that location with existing street trees, as well as the drainage system in that area. So I'll let them take a stab at your question, if I've missed anything.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I'll ask commissioners to report any ex parte, starting with Commissioner Elmore.
None.
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 None for me either. Okay. I will open up the public hearing, and we will do, like we did last one, 10 minutes on each side, please. Applicant, please proceed with your presentation.
Yes, good evening. Cory Autry again, from Wireless Policy Group here for AT&amp;T tonight. And since I went over more detail in my previous item, I will not repeat all of that. But I just wanted to provide a reminder that we reviewed small cell characteristics and why deploying small cell in the public right-of-way is an ideal mean, utilizing existing streetlights for deployment of small cell. And also talked a bit about the federal and state rights that AT&amp;T, as a telephone corporation, has to deploy in the public right-of-way. So, one thing I wanted to add, though, I know we've talked a lot about the alternative sites, and there is no specific guideline for how many alternatives need to be reviewed, where we're coming up with these alternative sites analysis as part of the permitting process. And because these small cells, like I indicated previously, provide coverage to such a small area, it doesn't make sense to go too far away from what might be an ideal location and provide, you know, 10 alternatives. Because at some point, you're going to get so far away of what the radio frequency engineer coverage objective is, it's just going to rule out all these other alternatives because they're just too far away from that objective, which might be an infill, like I stated previously, or possibly a capacity offload to the macro locations. I just wanted to add that, to keep that in mind. And I'll have Franklin come up and go into more specifics on the alternatives, and also talk a bit about alternative four and why it didn't meet the needs for this deployment. So come on up, Franklin.
Good evening again, Franklin Roscoe. So these slides you've seen already, that provides the coverage objective for that location. Primarily, we're looking at augmenting the coverage along that road because of the, the bluff on, on one side. You can see there's a macro site on the top right corner of, of the slide that sort of overshoots that area. So that area doesn't really get as much coverage from that macro site. And so the purpose for this would be to infill that, that particular road and location, that target area that was identified by the radio engineer. Next slide. So the, this are the four alternative analyses that we looked at. As Cory mentioned, again, these are low-power antennas, and so the, the leeway that we have in terms of looking at alternative analysis is very narrow. We would normally be looking at just the two adjacent poles, for the most part, because of the, the extent of the, the coverage that these low-power antennas provide. Next slide, please. So these are the, the proposed location versus the alternatives. I have some, some pictures that we're taking before construction. So here you can see on the two alternatives, number one and two, that you have basically a three-wall, retaining wall around the streetlight. Typically, with these sites, we do require to have, as, as you know, underground vaults for the disconnect and fiber connections. So essentially, adding that and expanding that would eventually expand that retaining wall to approximately six to eight feet. So that would be major disruption, and the fact that there's really very limited space for these two. Next one, please. Very similar on alternative number three. We're looking at a very steep hillside, required... Very similar on alternative number three, we're looking at a very steep hillside, requiring, again, additional grading along that area. So, the alternative number four, very similar issues. There is an existing drain that is directly adjacent to that pole, and so we wouldn't be able to replace that pole, because typically, these poles will have a much larger foundation, so that way, it could support not only the pole, but also the attachment that is on that proposed light pole. So that actually creates a great conflict, as well as conflict with existing trees, because again, we have to include underground vaults, that that would actually be encroaching into the existing tree. In one of our other projects that we are, that we're working on, Public Works, and the landscape architect indicated that we needed to maintain at least a minimum of 10 feet from trees. So, there is, those are the difficulties with number four. Again, this view is actually looking at it going southbound from the north, so a really different view that was provided by Jocelyn. On her slide, it also shows that, you know, because it's on a bend, it is more prominent than the other, the actual proposed alternative. I think that's the end of the slide. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer.
Okay, I'll ask commissioners to, any questions to the applicant? Okay, I'll ask the appellant to come up, I think that's Mr. Mosher again.
Thank you again, Chair Wiegand, members of the Planning Commission. Some of you may have the impression that I appeal everything that goes before the zoning I don't think you realize the volume of applications that go there. The Planning Commission has been meeting often only once a month, sometimes going even longer than that between meetings. The zoning administrator meets every two weeks regularly, and typically has a half-dozen applications before them. I have appealed maybe two of those, not counting these. Actually, these are the first that I've appealed to you. And this one, I'm going to be very brief, because I feel less strongly about this than I did about the other one. I appealed it in part because your chair tried to call it up for review. When it was before the zoning administrator, it appeared it was very much a judgment call over which of two locations, the proposed one or alternative four, was aesthetically the most, the best choice. It seemed to me that that is a choice that should be made for the benefit of the community by you, my fellow citizens, rather than a staff member. The zoning administrator made it appear that the location was very prominent, because it was on a curve. He made it sound like it was on a curve that bent out, but it's on a curve that bends in, and I think the opinions about what is the best location may vary. The presentation we just heard from the appellate was a little disturbing, though, because as we've heard, they say the range of these is so small, that perhaps they should only go one pole away. It sounds like in the future, they're going to come back and want these on every other pole, which makes it kind of moot what we're talking about today, if they need them that dense. And it's disturbing that we haven't actually heard what the overall plan is. So these just kind of come up randomly before the zoning administrator, and I, as a member of the public, have no idea what their overall plan is, and can only say that this one sounded like a call that should be made by the public, the citizens, you, rather than the zoning administrator. That's the primary, but not the only reason for the appeal. So I have just a few slides, because I could not anticipate what the staff was going to show you. So if we could have the first slide. This will be, this is, I see that you are seeing it, I think, we're not seeing it in this room. The first slide is showing the location, looking westbound on Bayside Drive. This is the proposed location. The next slide, which again, we're not seeing in this room, but apparently you are in that, it's showing it looking eastbound on Bayside Drive. The next slide is showing alternative location four, perhaps a slightly different view than the staff has showed you. This is looking westbound. And as another member of the public pointed out at the hearing way back in August, where this was being considered for a minor use permit, staff may find it inappropriate to add more blight to blight that is already there on the bluff. However, this location has already, in a sense, chosen technology over beauty. So having more technology at this location, and having it concentrated at one place, rather than spreading it out, is not necessarily a bad idea. So this is the view looking west. The next slide is the view looking east. I personally do not see why this location is considered more visually prominent than the proposed location. I would, like that other member of the public prefer, I think, putting technology in one place, rather than having to see it repeatedly as you go down Bayside Drive. And, because I could not anticipate what the staff was going to show, the next slide is showing alternative location two, which is to the east of the proposed location. This is just, as Jocelyn properly pointed out, this is what the bluff is supposed to look like. I would object to the site being placed here. This is what the Coastal Act is supposed to be protecting, our views of these. The next slide is, again, a view from that location, pointing out that there's a parking lot on the bayside of this, and the next slide is actually looking in that parking lot, which is called the Bayside Marina. And to me, because of the screening from the trees, there might actually be locations in there that the public in general would be less affected by than any of these streetlights, but my understanding is that is a prohibited location, because as Jocelyn pointed out, that would be between the First Public Road and the sea. The final slide, however, is my second reason for appealing this, which is, the streetlights were to be used, that was the understanding, when there were not better sites available. Another carrier, T-Mobile, has chosen this site, which is the Bahia Corinthian Yacht Club. You can see the same bluffs over to the, to the right, under the trees. This is across the street on the bayside of this. And although this is between the First Public Road and the sea, this is an allowed location, an existing building, and co-location with the other one, which would be a stealth location. No one would have the slightest idea that these antennas were in the roof disguised. The applicant will tell you that these only work on streetlights, it's beyond me, as a physicist, and actually, somebody who has a radio permit, why their antennas would work on a streetlight, but not work on a roof. This could be, because this is beyond alternative number one, it could be outside the range of what the appellate finds as suitable, it's actually in a deeper hole. This is a location where their coverage map says they do not have coverage, at least as bad as the other locations. But again, I do not know what their overall plan is. If they were to put something on a streetlight outside this location, they certainly should put it on the building instead. It's co-location, it's an allowed location, far superior. So, those are my comments. I am hoping that you will make the judgment, rather than the zoning administrator, as to whether alternative one or alternative four is the best choice for us, the people of Newport Beach, and for the people of California. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Questions from the commissioners to Mr. Mosher? And I'm going to leave the public hearing open a little longer than I did last time. I kind of aired by closing that a little soon, and we ask questions back to the applicant. So I want to keep that open for just a little bit longer, for questions for commissioners. Commissioner Kettig.
Chair. I think I'm right, we're being asked to approve the staff report selecting that, the primary site. Should we discuss one of these other sites as being just as appropriate?
Yeah, I'm actually interested in a little bit of reasoning from AT&amp;T, that site on the solar panel area there.
Number four.
Yeah, the already blighted area. And then I guess I'd be interested in knowing about the Bahia Corinthian, if there is an ability to co-locate there.
I think I'll call Franklin up as well, since he's more directly involved in the alternatives, but just to state one thing that I don't know was made clear enough, on alternative four, there are construction reasons why we cannot use that location. And as Franklin stated, you know, it's not just replacing the pole in the same location and placing the radios and equipment, the foundation underground is a little larger to accommodate for the placement, structurally for the placement of the radios and the antennas at the top. But also, we get our points of feed, as we call them, from the fiber, and also the power. So there'll be two handholds at the bottom of the pole, so there's more of an expanded area that's below grade in the right-of-way. It's not just replacing the pole. And that's one reason why you need to make sure there's sufficient room around the base of the pole. And for alternative four, there's a drain that comes out the curb, that's right there in that location. There's the tree that's right near where we would have to expand, so that tree would be affected, and most likely need to be removed, which I don't know would be feasible from the city's perspective. And then also, there's a staircase, I know it was in the presentation, but I don't know that we talked about it. There's a staircase that goes up, and I don't know if it's an access, you know, route to go do service on those solar panels, or what, but from AT&amp;T's perspective, it's not constructible at that location, and that's why we didn't choose alternative four. As far as the yacht club, there are a number of reasons why we wouldn't go to that location. It's too far from the objective, for one. For two, again, I've reiterated a number of times, we're focused on installing these small cells in the public rights of way, where we have the rights, where it makes sense to deploy the technology. We're not focused on private property, we don't have rights to be on, on private property. And even though Verizon and T-Mobile are on that property, they seem to be installing the traditional macro cell. Their coverage objectives seem to be different than what AT&amp;T's are for that small infill need that we have up the road. And also, I would argue that the light pole with the cylinder at the top is a much less intrusive than adding possibly a third chimney to the yacht club location. So Franklin, do you have anything to add to?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that, I didn't know that Mr. Mosher showed a light pole that is adjacent to the parking lot, but I think the parking lot for the yacht club. If you look at the alternative sites map, the alternative number one is actually directly in front of another residence, it's not adjacent to a parking lot. That, I think that other light is three lights to the south of the proposed location. That's all I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll ask a public comment on this. Is there anyone in the community room that wishes to speak on this item? And I'll go to the phones, there is one caller. Okay, you're on.
Hi, good evening, commissioners and chair. My name is Nancy Scarborough. I have a comment about, just in general, the, these issues that are going to be appealed to the Coastal Commission. The Coastal Commission has had a problem for some time with Newport Beach and our consultant. We don't have that consultant anymore, and we're representing ourselves with the staff. However, when we know that these are going to be appealed to the Coastal Commission, and there's a chance that the Coastal Commission's going to review this and kick it back to us, I agree with Commissioner Kliman, that we should exhaust all possible alternatives, and that we should really be careful when we know that this is going to happen. We really should be completely sure that there are not other ways to solve these problems without constantly putting this stuff in front of the Coastal Commission and allowing it to be kicked back to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other callers? Okay. And so what I'll do is just ask one more time if commissioners have any questions to the appellant or the applicant. Being none, I'll close the public hearing, and bring it back to commissioners for discussion. Commissioner Kliman.
So I'll just start by saying, for the record, for this application, I do agree with staff's analysis. I do think the site is appropriate, or at least is compliant, and not in conflict with the implementation plan. On a related or unrelated note, I do agree with Mr. Mosher in that, again, that 250 to 1,000 feet number is sticking with me, and is, I think there needs to be a cost-benefit analysis, we're spending so much time and effort on these applications, and it doesn't sound like we're going to be getting too much benefit ultimately, in terms of additional coverage, especially in these beach areas, which it's so desperately needed, particularly during the summer season, when the city has so many visitors, and everybody's, of course, using their devices. So I know I've said this in the past, every time we have an application from one of the carriers, I say the same thing, I would love to see some kind of a comprehensive plan. I don't know if that's even appropriate, but I have been curious about that from the start, so... But just to go back to this particular appeal, in this case, I would not agree with the appellant, but would agree with staff.
Okay, great. Anyone want to make a motion, or discuss more? Commissioner Elmore.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve this with staff's one modification.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, moving on to the next item, this is item number six, the Chihuahua Cerveza Expansion, PA 2019-160. Site location is 3107 Newport Boulevard and 3109 Newport Boulevard. Again, if you want to comment on this item, please call, if you're listening from home, please call 949-270-8165. Staff presentation.
Yes, good evening, thank you Chair Wiegand and to the commission for being here tonight. My name is David Lee with the Planning Division, and this is not a small cell project, this is a restaurant expansion at Chihuahua Cerveza, located at 3107 and 3109 Newport Boulevard. It's a conditional use permit with a parking waiver and a coastal development permit. So this is the project location, this is the landing shopping center on the peninsula. This is the landing shopping center on the peninsula between Newport Boulevard and Balboa Boulevard. It's an existing large center, has a 236 space parking lot on site, and the center is zoned as neighborhood commercial, includes grocery store, multiple restaurants, retail and service uses. So this project is an expansion of existing restaurant, Chihuahua Cerveza, into the adjacent suite, which is already existing. So these are the operational changes that I'll list and go through real quick. Obviously, with the expansion, the floor area will increase from 1878 to 2616 on the interior, and the patio expands from 259 square feet to 626 square feet. The applicant is requesting an upgrade for the ABC license from a type 41 to a type 47 on cell general. The hours of operation are proposed to be changed. Currently, they are 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily. However, they're proposing the interior to be open from 6:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Sunday through Thursday and 6:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday. That's for the interior, and for the exterior is 6:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. Since there is an earlier opening time, there is a condition of approval that states that alcohol service will not begin until 9:00 a.m. Currently, there's no live entertainment permitted. The applicant is requesting live entertainment on Tuesdays and Saturdays between 7:00 and 9:00 p.m., and we'll go over that in just one second. Here's the existing floor plan of the project. 3107 is Chihuahua Cerveza, and 3109 is the adjacent suite that was previously occupied by a takeout poker establishment. So the project is simple, is to expand over into 3109, including the outdoor area. This is the proposed floor plan. As you can see, the kitchen, bathroom, and back of house is going to stay the same within 3107, but there's going to be now an expanded dining room, which includes a bar area of 15 seats maximum. There's also additional storage for liquor and beer, and as previously mentioned, an expanded patio. So with the parking, currently, the entire plaza is parked at a flat rate of one space per 200 square feet gross. And this rate is allowed for shopping centers that are under 100,000 square feet with a maximum of 15% area for eating and drinking establishments, and that's what the code allows for. They also had a five-space waiver granted in 2010, so it makes the requirement 235 spaces. Currently, it's 236 spaces on site, so there's a surplus of one space. However, with the expansion of Chihuahua, it now pushes the eating and drinking establishment percentage over 15%, which the code calls out now to park it per individual uses. So we need to calculate each use on site and determine the overall requirement. And with that, the parking rate jumps up to 261 spaces. Again, the provided parking is 236, and it leaves a deficit of 25 spaces in the parking lot. So to justify the parking waiver, there was a parking study that was provided. The study was performed in pre-COVID times, in May 2019. It was done during typical weather conditions on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And as you can see on the table in the top, the existing parking counts, the highest peak was 135 spaces. Out of 236, that's a 57% occupancy in the parking lot. The parking study performs a calculation and estimates that 156 spaces will be the highest demand with the expansion of Chihuahua, and that would create a 66% occupancy. So the study concludes that the parking lot does accommodate this expansion. In terms of alcohol, again, it's an upgrade from a beer and wine type 41 to a type 47 general. It is located in reporting District 15, which has an undue concentration of ABC licenses as well as a high crime rate. However, Police Department has reviewed this project thoroughly and has no objections as they're proposing to close without late hours on the weekends, 11:00, and weekdays, 10:00. An operator license has been noticed, and it will be required for the applicant to go through that process and obtain that with the Police Department if this project is approved. For live entertainment, they are proposing Tuesdays and Saturdays from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. There's conditions of approval that would allow only acoustic performances, so there's no stage, there's no amplification, there's two performers maximum, and all doors and windows are to be closed during the performances. They recently had two trial runs with limited-term permits, and they did a sound study, which summarizes that there's no noise impacts above what's normal in the area with these live performances indoors. So with the findings, staff believes that the project is compatible with the neighborhood as there's no late hours. It has been an eating and drinking establishment since 2011, and this expansion provides just another visitor-serving use within the coastal zone. Also, it accommodates parking, since the parking lot cannot fit the, you know, the proposed demand, it doesn't affect the surrounding public street parking that's nearby. The recommended action is to conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA pursuant to Class 1 and Class 3, and then adopt the provided resolution, which approves a conditional use permit and coastal development permit. Just to note, this would supersede the previous conditional use permit that was granted in a resolution in 2011. Once again, my name is David. If you have any questions, you can ask me. Our applicant is here tonight, and she has a short presentation if you need it. Her name is Caitlin Crowley. The parking consultant is on the line from RK Engineering, and Wendy Jo is also here from the Police Department. Thank you.
Great, thank you. That was good. All right, any commissioner questions for staff? Commissioner Kedding. Commissioner Elmore.
Yolit. In the, just a quick question. In the presentation, you said it's a visitor serving, it would provide for visitor-serving use? What exactly is that?
Visitor-serving use, like it's an attraction for people to come to the beach and enjoy, like, a restaurant, service to visitors in the community.
Is it already currently a visitor-serving?
Correct, it is currently, no.
Okay, so it doesn't change that?
No.
Commissioner Kedding.
Staff, a couple things. I'm very familiar with these types of projects. Has the landlord written an approval letter? Jim? We haven't heard from the landlord, have we?
I haven't heard from the landlord. All applications are required to be authorized by the property owner, and it, oh, yes, I stand corrected, Simone indicated, the tenant and landlord are the same person. So, yes, this is authorized by the property owner.
So the tenant is the property owner?
My understanding is the property owner, it operates this.
Pardon me, pardon me. The shopping center property owner?
Yes.
Is the tenant?
Well, they're not technically the same thing, but the, excuse me, the property owner is operating this establishment, and it's the same person.
Okay. The second question is, did the Pavilion's Market give any kind of comment on this?
Chair Kedding, they did not give a comment.
How do you notice them when they're based out of LA? They're not 300 feet, I mean, they don't, I believe they own that. I think that's just a tenant in the center. How do you reach somebody that's the anchor tenant with a notice?
CDP, CDP is different? Occupants and owners. Yeah, Chair Kedding, for the coastal development permit noticing, the labels that are required to go out are to both the occupants and owners. So listed occupants would directly get a notice.
So every tenant occupant in that shopping center was given notice?
Yes, they should have been given one.
We're not sure, though, are we?
I would need to go back and check, but.
Well, this request for a reduction of 25 cars is a real surprise in a very tight little shopping center. That's why I wanted to know what the anchor tenant had to say about it. Staff, when was that patio allowed that extends out into the public walkway? Pretty big structure, not just a bunch of chairs and tables.
Yes, Chair Kedding, that was allowed, I believe it was in July, under the emergency use permit program that we have.
No, no, I'm sorry. I don't mean that one. That one's in the parking lot.
Yes.
I'm talking about the patio that, it's in front of the front windows, that patio that's been there.
It's, the original approval for the, it was a previous restaurant, was done in 2011. So that included a patio outdoors, I believe, and that's been there.
Okay. When was the five-car reduction in the shopping center? What was it for in 2010?
In 2010, there was a five-car reduction that was approved to allow for additional patio area, I believe, because the center has four restaurants, I believe, and because they wanted additional patio area out there, they granted a five-space waiver to account for some of that patio area.
Okay, somewhere in that shopping center, but not.
It was for a collection of those patios that you see out there today. Yeah.
All right, thank you. I'll have some more later.
Commissioner Rosin.
So I'm fairly certain that the calculation is here built into handwritten page 10 in terms of the difference, why the existing or the previous use, call it existing, at 3109, and then this use creates a change in the deficit. Can you help explain that for me?
Yes, sure, Commissioner Rosin. The previous use in 3109, although it's a takeout, it's a takeout establishment, so takeout is parked at a standard rate of one space per 200, well, in this plaza, it'd be one space per 200 square feet. So once you change this into a eating and drinking establishment, by the code, that has a different parking rate than a takeout. And that eating and drinking establishment is parked at one space per 40 square feet of net public area, which is the area that the public would use. So you wouldn't count the back of house or kitchen, bathrooms, things like that. So that's why there's an increase in the parking rate.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Any other commissioner questions? All right, we'll do ex parte, starting with Commissioner Elmore. None.
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 I am at with applicant's consultant on site.
None.
Telephone call with applicant's consultant.
Yes, I went onsite with the applicant consultant and a couple of their members of their team and walked through the project. Okay, I will open up the public hearing with the applicant if you want to have a presentation.
Good evening, Chair Wagen and commissioners. Thank you so much for taking your time to hear our application tonight. A special thanks also to David Lee and staff for their assistance throughout this process. My name is Caitlin Crowley. On behalf of Chihuahua, from our team, we also have Olivia here to answer any questions regarding restaurant operations. Our consultants are also available via phone if you have any questions regarding parking or noise. I do have a presentation ready to go, but in the interest of time, I will not give it unless requested by a commissioner. Two things I would like to quickly address. We have received some letters from the community regarding concerns for late-night hours. We are asking to close at the same time that we currently close, which is 10:00 p.m. on weekdays and 11:00 p.m. on weekends. We have no intentions of becoming a late-night bar or nightclub. Four concerns regarding live music. We are not asking for amplified music. It would be acoustical only, and all doors and windows would remain closed at that time. We have reviewed the staff report, and we accept the conditions, but we would like to reserve some time at the end for rebuttal if needed. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? I did have a one question on beach parking, so that, in the past, has had like an observer that will tell folks not to go and park at the, and then walk to the beach. Is that still something that that center has?
We do have security guards. There's usually two that are roaming around, and they are towing cars if they are seen leaving our property.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I will ask if there is anyone in the community room that wants to have any public Being none, I'll go to the phone. Is there anyone on the phone? Okay. I will, I guess, bring up one item that maybe I'll have the applicant potentially come back up for, and maybe the commissioners might have interest in this, but I do, would like to not restrict them so purely on the live entertainment and potentially ask the commission to see if they're interested in Sunday from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. I don't want to restrict you, but usually that's like a brunchtime mariachi enjoyment time, so I'm not sure if that's something that applicant would be interested in looking at and if the commissioners would agree with me on that. And then also, specific holidays, too. You may be interested in having your live entertainment, so you don't have to kind of come back to us again, but, you know, Cinco de Mayo, you may be interested in, and maybe some other holidays throughout the year. So I'll leave that to the commissioners to, you know, have some agreement with me on that. But, you know, with businesses struggling these days, you kind of don't want to leave everything, you want to leave some room for some growth, so I don't want to be so restrictive to those two specific days. I know you want Taco Tuesday, is why you've listed Tuesday, and Saturday is probably a more, you know, peak time for you during those evening hours, but on Sundays, my guess, you could leave that open for your discussion there if you're interested. So that's something that I looked at when I was reviewing this and thought it could be helpful to your business model. Commissioner Lowry.
Yeah, just going to add on a little bit to that, because just going through the noise study as well as looking at the, you know, the hours and the decibel location, looks like you guys were under what was required, obviously, but it also, you know, to stay within those parameters, it's to 10. I was just wondering why you requested to 9 and not till 10 at night, and if that's something you would prefer to be able to have live entertainment through 10 p.m.
We are okay with the hours that we've requested.
Okay, Commissioner Kleiman.
I just have one follow-up question for staff about the parking. What does the overflow look like? I mean, it seems like, since we discussed, the applicant is also the owner of the shopping center, so I think there's obviously plenty of incentive there for him to manage parking appropriately and, you know, do his best for both his customers but also the tenants. But I'm just curious, because obviously, we would want to avoid having a situation like Lido Marina Village where, you know, people are then parking in the community, but it seems like there should be ample shared parking overall, since they do have their own lot. But I'm just curious, if for some reason, like on a holiday on Cinco de Mayo or whatever, are cars then parking on the, on public streets? Are they going to be pushed into neighboring areas? What does that look like?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Kleiman, and as you can see from the parking study, they're not expecting, for the most part, to be overflowed, and it's quite underparked on the percentage. However, when there is overflow, the parking study does include a parking management plan, and they, it's not fully set in stone, but they do have, you know, alternatives to provide maybe areas for drop-off for Uber and Lyft, things like that. And also, they have future valet plans if needed, only if necessary. And of course, there is off-street parking, but that is the, you know, the last-case scenario for them to have the customers park there. But they do have these alternatives if needed on these holidays or busy times.
Okay, thank you. I'm prepared to make a motion if you.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and.
Commissioner Kedding.
Ms. Kedding.
Yes, I'm curious. I didn't get a good feeling in the study, parking study, about where the employees park. We hear about this everywhere, that they shove them off into the neighborhoods because the customers need to park there. We did it down by, along the waterfront there, near the Lido Theater. So I didn't get a good, comfortable feeling that all the employees in this shopping center park on the site. park on the site. If they're providing Uber and Lyft stations, that's more parking being taken away. What about bicycle parking? These beach places that are serving alcohol and music, a lot of people ride bikes, but they clutter up the sidewalks. Where are they going? Have you guys looked at that or talked to them and have a plan for that? You don't want to park in front of somebody else's store. The other question I had, I'd like to hear answers to all this, whether it's the applicant, the owner, or the staff. They added a bar and more seating and dining, but they didn't add additional restrooms. Isn't there a standard for that?
So for, thank you, Commissioner Ketting. For the, for the restrooms, this was, this was reviewed by the building department pretty thoroughly. And I believe that those, those restrooms do suffice for the use and for the expansion. In terms of the parking for the bikes and those questions, I would like to defer that to the applicant if possible regarding the employee parking.
I'll reopen the public hearing then, so the applicant can address that.
In terms of employees, they are parking on-site. They do, each of them do have a employee pass and so that the security knows not to tow them. So they were included in the parking study. As far as bicycles, we do have bike racks on-site as well.
Commissioner Ketting, you want to follow up with some more things?
No, I'd like to address the staff. I mean, the Commissioners on the major item I have a problem with, thank you.
Commissioner Elmore.
Yeah, I have just a question for PD. I mean, so what effectively, I'm a little more focused on is the, the alcohol license going from a liquor to a bar and then the addition of the bar, if you will? My question would be for, I guess, PD, I read the report and it looks like you feel comfortable with it. In this zone, clearly there's a incredibly high concentration of licenses. At what point would PD, I mean, what point do you not become comfortable with more liquor licenses be given, us giving out more liquor licenses?
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Wendy Jo. I'm an investigator with the Police Department. I serve as the APC liaison. So we look at every application separately. And we are always and routinely concerned when we add alcohol, especially spirits, to this area, especially since it has such undue concentration. However, in this situation, when it does not have late hours, and we look at the record of the applicant, in this case, they have not proven to be a burden on police resources and they don't have late hours. So therefore, we feel as though the conditions would mitigate any concerns we have.
What's the, maybe you can't answer the question, but I'm just curious. At what point do you hit a bandwidth or just a concentration issue of just too much in that zone?
I mean, I think there already is too much in that zone personally, which is why we lay all of that out for all of you to decide. There, it is our number one over-concentrated area in the city in terms of alcohol licenses and crime. So that is why we condition and we take into consideration, you know, so many aspects of the use permit.
Maybe just a statement for my colleagues. I kind of too do feel like there is a concentration, really heavy concentration of spirits distributed in that zone. I mean, if you go around there, you've got from, got the Malarkies, you've got Rudy's, which is now going to be something else. You have the Hovensland House right over there. They're serving spirits at the corner at Hosom Bistro. I mean, just right within, you know, Ketting's sandwich, you have probably six different liquor establishments where you can go out and buy booze. And so I like the expansion. I like what they're doing. The fact that they're looking for this extended liquor license and putting in a bar, it feels a little concerning to me for that zone. But I do think that the business could be very successful without that. I'm on board with the music and the hours of operation and everything else. So that's my position. Thank you, by the way.
Thank you, Commissioner Elmore. Any other questions from Commissioners? I'll close the public hearing again and bring it back to Commissioner Ketting because I think he wanted to address us about it.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's a dangerous precedent for a project to be reduced by 10.6% of its required parking. This is a very tight little site. It's impacted in that area. You have the magnet of the beach, you have the magnet of other places around there. The neighborhood may not shop there. If they can't get in conveniently, get their groceries to the car and get out. I mean, if there's 25-space reduction of what's code, why do we have a code then? I mean, really? Maybe in this zone down there in the beach area, it should be twice the parking. So we know there's enough coverage. I mean, it's just, I find this incredible that staff would support this kind of a reduction. That's my take. And I also worry about the liquor licenses as well, because there's enough down there. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, want to, any other questions or want to make a motion on any of these items that we've discussed? We could always do a call for review on these items, you know, come back a year from now and, and see if the parking is working, to see if the alcohol is excessive. Commissioner Elmore, I just wanted to re-ask, was that more, would you be interested in just continuing the space, but as a 41? Or would you be more inclined just to approve the 47, but come back a year from now and see if, you know, it's, it's working or?
My position is that continue the space as a 41.
Okay. Okay, so we have, you know, some discussion on the alcohol, we have some discussion on the parking, we had some discussion about the acoustic increase, you know, for Sunday in the lunchtime hours. Happy to entertain a motion from anyone to see where we want to go with this.
Or a discussion on those items among the Commissioners.
Yeah, that's fine.
Commissioner Lowry.
I kind of like what, where Eric's going on this in terms of maybe to approve as-is, but come back and review. I mean, I get the alcohol, but yet if you really want to go and drink more than one should, there's six other places to go and to limit a Mexican restaurant, can't even have a margarita or something, it just, you know, kind of doesn't go with the theme. And, and I get it, you know, Peter, on the parking, but they do have, they do have a program. It seems like it's currently staffed with two individuals that are, it looks like actively towing people who, who shouldn't be parked there. So I like more the thing where Eric is going in terms of conditioning us to come back in a year. If, if there's alcohol issues and if there's parking issues, then us to be able to reevaluate it and, and make whatever amendments or restrictions at that time.
Commissioner Rosin.
Yeah, I support Vice Chair Lowry's comments. Those are in terms of having it come back in a year and having us call, the ability to call this up and take a look at it.
Great. Yeah, I mean, again, this is closing at nine o'clock, right? Is that, do I have that right? Or is it 11 o'clock, sorry? In between. But it's a restaurant, right? I mean, this isn't a bar and the expansion isn't that large to be in a bar setting. Yes, there could be some bar stools and, but I mean, it's, it's nothing that we're turning into, you know, a typical scene of a bar. So I, I am okay with what Commissioner Rosin and Lowry said. I'm, I'm happy to give them a little extra time on the acoustic music. But I think coming back and looking at this a year from now, I think is, is fair. And again, it's, this is a restaurant, not a, not a bar.
Commissioner Elmore.
Yeah, the idea of them coming back in a year, is that a mandatory comeback or is that is if we call them?
Yeah, that, that's a.
And again, I just, you know, when I, PD sits here and looks me in the eye and says, we're concerned period, just with too much concentration of liquor licenses. I look, I understand, it'd be nice to, but at some point, we just have to stop that zone, the liquor licenses going out to the spirits. I mean, argument, argument works both ways, that there are other establishments where they can go to.
Sure, and I would agree with that. I, I think.
And PD's going to do their job, you know, and they have to bring it in front of us continually, but the sentiment was clear. There's just too much in that zone.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. I think when we're looking at these, when we did Hosom, they'd been an operator for some time. Chihuahua's been an operator for some time. And if PD's saying that there's no incidents with them, yes, that goes with the land. So if they pack up and leave, you know, things change. But we want to give the operators the ability to have the tools to stay for the long term so that they are good investors with our community and work with our community that way. So I, I think that giving them these tools allows them to stay in business longer. And I think this particular applicant, I don't think he's going anywhere. So, you know, if we call these up for review anytime we want, let alone for this year, I think we have that ability as Commissioners to say, this isn't working and we're going to restrict you and we're going to change this thing up. But I think a mandatory one-year review is, is great for us to see if it's working. And if it's not, then we can go and change things then. So do I, do we have a motion or anything you guys want to further discuss?
Commissioner Rosin.
Got lost there. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve item six with the ability, with the mandatory call up in one year, especially as it relates to parking and alcohol.
Okay.
I'll second.
And any interest in the change in acoustic music to Sunday from 11:00 to 2:00? And specific holidays like, you know, Cinco de Mayo, if that's really a holiday, but gives them as a, you know, an operator to have a little fun with their business?
Sure.
We can leave that to the Community Development Director to choose which holidays those are. Is that something we could do? The maker of the motion, okay with that? And yeah, second. Anyone want a second?
Yes, I'll continue my second there.
The motion carries five to with Commissioners Elmore and Ketting voting no.
Okay, great. All right, guys, you got to come back in a year and show us that you're doing something good for us. Okay, item number, number seven, that's the Poor Vida Restaurant, PA 2019-259. Site location, 5,000 Birch Street.
Chair, real quick, I'm going to, I have to recuse myself from this item. Some colleagues of mine work for the ownership of the building.
Okay, all right.
And Mr. Chairman, I do too. I have a membership in the Pacific Club who's within the sphere there of influence, I guess.
Anyone else? Okay. And you guys are coming back, right? Because we have one more item after this. Okay, staff, we'll wait just one moment. Okay, I think we're good. I think we're just waiting on a presentation to load.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Melinda Whalen, Planning Division. This is a request for a conditional use permit to authorize a new restaurant, Poor Vida, with a type 41 ABC license, beer and wine, no late hours. And the request also includes a parking waiver. The location is within an existing office in a 10-story office building in Cole Center, Office Site B. Cole Center consists of over 300,000 offices. And parking is provided in a shared parking pool of 3,045 parking spaces. The areas consist mostly of offices, but Uptown Newport is approximately 800 feet south of the proposed site. So this is the proposed floor plan. It will provide 22 seats interior and 32 seats exterior. And the type 41 ABC license was reviewed by the Police Department with no objections. And standard conditions of approval are included in the resolution to mitigate any impacts to the surrounding area. And so here's a rendering of the interior of the restaurant. So the parking for Cole Center is shared, or Cole Center Office Site B is shared throughout the site. Office Site B is outlined in the blue and on the map above. And the, all of the parking areas are color-coded and labeled. So the existing office site had an allocation of 12 parking spaces. So the new restaurant has a credit of 12 spaces. Strict application of the zoning code would require the new restaurant to provide 21, a net increase of 21 parking spaces. However, LSA has provided a parking study to demonstrate that the actual demand of parking for the restaurant is, is much less. And actually, the, there is only deficient parking during the weekday lunch hours. So mornings and evenings, there's surplus parking on-site. And the analysis further demonstrates that due to locational characters, location characteristics and access to the restaurants provided primarily via walking. So during the peak hours during lunchtime, the primary clientele of the restaurant will be from the existing office building and from the office, surrounding offices. So the new restaurant provides a needed service in the area. There are not many casual sit-down dining options within walking distance for the offices. And it also provides a service for the new residential, which is also in walking distance. Staff is recommending conducting public hearing and find this project exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15301 under Class 1 of the SEQA guidelines and Adopt Resolution Number PC 2020-037, approving use permit 2019-56. And the applicant, Tim Strater, is here, available for questions, as well as Ken Wilhelm from LSA Associates. And Wendy Jo is here from Police Department. And the owner of Poor Vida is on the Zoom call.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for staff at the moment? Commissioner Climen.
When was the parking study done? It says September. Was it just last month or?
No, they went through several rounds of corrections with the City Traffic Engineer, but the actual analysis was done January through early March. The, their location in Anaheim, where they generated the actual demand for this restaurant, was taken in February 2019. And then the pedestrian counts were taken in January 2020.
But they didn't count parking during the coronavirus crisis, did they? I'm assuming there's hardly anyone actually on-site these days? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll start with Commissioner Klostermeier on expartes.
None.
I did speak with the applicant's consultant.
I had a brief phone call with the applicant's consultant.
I had a phone call from the applicant's consultant.
As did I. It was very brief. We just talked about the merits of the project and if I had any questions. Okay, I will now open up the public hearing with the applicant to give a presentation, please.
Good evening, Chair Wiegand and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Tim Strater Jr. with Starpoint Ventures, consultant to Poor Vida Restaurant and the property owner, John Hancock Life. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for all their work on this. As Melinda mentioned, it's been probably six months or so of back and forth with both the traffic staff, Tony Brine, and the Community Development staff in working out the details of the parking study and of the conditions of approval. And we're now at a point tonight where staff and the applicant are all in agreement on the current conditions, as well as the study. This will be a great addition to both 5,000 Birch tenants, as well as office tenants and residents in the immediate area. As Melinda mentioned, there is a lack of food options in that area. And I actually have my own office, walking distance. I'm at the corner of Campus and Teller. And as I can attest to being there every day, I have to get in my car to go to lunch basically every day because there's nothing to walk to in that immediate area. The parking study also, as was mentioned, did show that 33 spaces are required based upon the net public area calculation that the City of Newport Beach requires. 12 spaces do exist in the project. And so the shortfall of 21 spaces is only in the lunchtime peak period. The restaurant will be open for breakfast and dinner. But as you know, an office parking lot of 3,000 stalls is effectively empty first thing in the morning and after 5:00 at night. So it's really just the lunchtime. And as I mentioned, because people do tend to drive to lunch, parking spaces will open up that would make up for that 21-stall shared waiver. Important to note that Condition 6 gives the city the ability, if there happens to be a parking problem somewhere in the, at some point in the future, the city would have the right to come in and ask for a parking management plan, which could require valet parking, or stack parking, or some other solution in the event that there is a parking issue in the future. So approving the project tonight with that condition does not preclude the city's ability to come back later and come up with another solution. We do have support letters, or you should have received support letters from a couple of neighboring property owners, Heinz at 4,000 MacArthur, River Rock on behalf of the owners of 4,44350 Von Karman, a couple of tenants in the project, Rushmore Group and Regis, are all in support of the project. There was only one letter in opposition to the project, which you've also seen, and that's 4340 Von Karman. That's the four-story office condominium next door. 5,000 Birch has been a good neighbor of theirs and has been willing in the past and in the future to grant them the right to use some excess parking on an as-available basis, which is on a month-to-month, as-available basis. There has not been any parking issues to date at the 5,000 Birch property. And in fact, they've had excess, which they've been able to let the neighbors use. And we don't believe that Poor Vida is going to create any kind of a long-term parking impact to 4340 Von Karman. So finally, I'll call your attention to the exhibit that's shown on the screen there. That was produced after the plans had been approved by city staff and gone to print for Planning Commission. But we did want you to see what an exterior image looks like of the outdoor dining space because the images on the last page of the plan set are just interior. So with that, we are here to answer any questions you might have. And I thank you for your listening and urge your approval tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Kettin.
Yes, staff, could you put up the blow-up site plan? Melinda?
Yes, they're pulling me. Thank you.
That's it, thank you. The applicant's consultants are here. I'm just curious why, I have no way to point to this, but seat tables, 39, 40, 41, and 42, that little, I mean, those are chairs. Is somebody gonna point to that?
In that green?
Yeah, in the green. See how the green pops out to that radius?
Hello, I'm Dion Rodriguez, and I'm the property manager. I can speak to that table extension. So we had originally conceded that the patio area would be a little shorter. But since COVID and the need for outdoor dining existed, we felt it would be prudent to push out the patio area and allow Poor Vida to extend their table seating. It does encroach, I would say, it really doesn't encroach too far into the courtyard overall. You're seeing a micro view of the courtyard. But the courtyard in a whole is vast, and that encroachment, we didn't feel would impede any of the occupants to the building as they come out and eat lunch daily and have meetings out in that area.
Okay, I didn't know who that was. But meanwhile, that area that pops out looks like it's unnecessary. And when you walk around that beautiful radius circle in there, you have to stop now and jog to the left, go up and go around. They're gonna fence it. I'm not opposed to the number of tables and chairs. Why can't they just move them back in and keep that open as a continuation of the walkway? Jim, do you see what I'm talking about?
I believe I do. It's really that pop-out that you're concerned about and the walkability of the plaza?
Right. I mean, it's just, it's like stopping that radius walkway that goes right around it. Just take that fence back 15, 20 feet so that you can continually walk around the radius.
We do appreciate your concern. You know, the plaza is quite large. This is, as the applicant's representative said, is a micro view of the entire plaza. We felt there was sufficient space to walk around, so we didn't see a concern there, but...
Do we have a slide that could, we could show Commissioner Kettin how it looks from a larger viewpoint?
Yeah, I walked around and had the plan, and I said, "This doesn't seem..." I don't know why they need that other space.
Are the chairs and tables a permanent fixture, or are they moved out daily?
The restaurant applicant is proposing a banquet.
Sorry to interrupt. If you could state your name, and I don't know if everyone caught that. It was a real quick transition.
I'm Dion Rodriguez. I'm the property manager for 5,000 Birch.
Thank you. And then, so the tables and chairs, do they come in and out, or are they fixtures? Permanent?
Right now, the Poor Vida is providing or recommending that they install a banquet seating out there. So there would be some permanent seating and some tables and chairs. So it would be a mixture of both.
Great, and Commissioner Kettin, do you have...
Well, okay, it just seems like they're breaking up that circular patio. If you have a drawing, you wouldn't know what I'm talking about.
I have a better drawing with me. If someone wanted to see that, unfortunately, it wasn't part of the package.
All right. I asked your consultant about delivery. Where will that be? Is that that long hallway at the bottom that'll go out to this parking area?
Correct. So the backside of the restaurant, or the backside of the East Tower, is a loading dock area that's not referenced in this plan. So the deliveries would come in and out of that back area. The delivery folks would come through that narrow hallway and into the back of the restaurant.
And since this was never a restaurant, what about trash enclosure?
Well, there was a restaurant years ago, just not in this particular location. Trash is located in the adjacent building that houses the parking structure and our building engineering offices.
So they'll take it over there?
Correct.
All right. What else did I have? And it's not a sit-down restaurant. You go up, order and wait, take your food on a tray or something, and go sit down? Is that correct?
Combination of both. They will have waitstaff available, but you will be placing your order at a counter.
All right, because I noticed in here it said there's only five employees.
Correct.
All right. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? I did have a question in relation to, we're supposed to see this at our next hearing related to the Cole Center's proposal for some housing units in that area. Has there been any discussion with the applicant for that, with this project at all? Just asking the applicant, I guess, and staff. But have they reached out to get an understanding on how things are gonna flow there with this restaurant, if it's impactful to the residents? If it's supported by, you know, the idea that there would be more of an onsite restaurant for residents to go to if we approved it? You know, just checking to make sure that there's a fluid conversation occurring.
Well, there is actually Pasern Group, who is proposing that Development is our tenant. They reside in the sixth floor of the East Tower. And we have had multiple conversations about how the restaurant would complement their residential area, not only Uptown, but the new development.
Okay, I just wanted to check that. I know that we can't talk too much about it because it's not before us, but I just want to make sure there was some discussion being occurred or occurring. So, okay, I will now open it up to those who wish to speak. I'm gonna give a phone number of 949-270-8165 if you're listening at home and you want to call in on this item. And I'll go to the community room for any comments, please. I don't see any, so we'll go to the phones. Anything? Okay, all right. I will close the public hearing unless any commissioners want to go back to the applicant with anything. Yes, Commissioner Klemm.
I was just curious about the 11:00 PM closing time. I realize that that is not considered late hours by the Police Department, but it does still strike me, especially for a restaurant that's sole purpose or primary purpose is to serve the office use and the surrounding uses there. But I feel like eventually with residential, that will become potentially a nuisance. I'm just curious if the applicant can speak to that and if either they or the rest of the commission would consider, you know, even moving that back by an hour, I think would make a difference.
Again, particularly since it seems like they're targeting mostly that lunch crowd.
I can address that, Tim Strater, Starpoint Ventures. I've spoken with the owner-operator of Poor Vida about that exact question. And the answer was that the actual hours of operation are going to depend on the success of their dinner and evening operations. So because the city does allow 11:00 o'clock, that's the time that they would like to receive approval for. But if business is such that at 9:00 o'clock, there's nobody there, then they're not gonna continue to stay open until 11:00 if business doesn't justify it. But they would like to go into it with that opportunity and stay open till 11:00 since the zoning code allows that.
I did want to, as Commissioner Klemm brought that up, I wanted to make sure that you weren't restricting yourself on anything should residential be there. And maybe Wendy, you could maybe speak to it too. But if there was a license that allowed beer and wine to be taken away, you know, on-site to the residential so that it would limit the drive of potential residents to go to other places, is that something they would have to come back for? Or could they ask for that tonight? Or, and I'm not saying that we need to throw it down, but, you know, I'm not even sure if the applicant's even thought of that. But at some point, you know, if you've got something where it's walkable, I think that's the goal for a community that is looking to, you know, grow in our, you know, airport area. So if there's a potential to limit traffic, limit walk or driving, it's all on-site. I'm just curious if that's something that had been even discussed.
So Melinda just told me that off-sales were not discussed. However, you know, when you order a bottle of wine and you don't finish a bottle of wine at any time, you can take that bottle of wine home with you, unless conditioned otherwise. So off-sales could be something that we could discuss for walkability. A lot of the condos, I can think of the one, the apartment complex just behind us has a small off-site component for that same concern you just raised. And PD wouldn't have any concerns with that.
So maybe the applicant can look into it for the future if they want to discuss it. I'm sure we could bring it back for discussion, but it looks like you want to address that, maybe? Go for it.
Yes, that is something that has not been discussed nor analyzed. So we'll leave it to a future round of approval, should they want to go in that direction.
Perfect, okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll close the public hearing if there's any other questions. Okay, all right, we're gonna close that and then bring it to discussion. Oh, Commissioner Rosin, did you want to talk to that?
Well, I guess this is more of an observation, but it didn't occur to me, and yeah, I've stood there in that center before, that that was going to be a fenced area. And the circulation is important for that area. In fact, I was, now that we're sitting here, I'm blown away that that would be fenced in. So I was just wondering, because I can't stand it when I have to walk around something when I can walk straight through. Is there an opportunity here where that could be open for the... Or is that, is there another reason because of the alcohol and that needs to be fenced? Is that what's happening there?
That's precisely it. The sale of alcohol requires a barrier by the Alcohol Beverage Control.
I figured as much. So I was just wondering, can there be a latched fence for people to cruise through? And I have that, but it... Is that something that is available, or... And if not, fine, I just, it's, I have a hard time thinking about that.
We could certainly entertain the idea of having a gate open in the fence. I mean, what you saw is a rendering and what we're, you know, would like to proceed with. But if we need to have a gate for walkability, we certainly can as long as we don't violate any alcohol licenses.
Appreciate that.
Great, okay. I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the commission to make a motion or further discussion. Staff, do we have any discussion on that?
Chair Wiegand, Wendy and I were just discussing the prospects of, working with the applicant, you know, we theoretically could put the patio in one location. And if there's a particular pathway that is important to the users of the facility, you know, then you could create that. And so you just have a couple of gates, and then the waitstaff would have to go through those gates to get to the other side of the patio. So I think those options are available to us. And we would like the opportunity maybe to modify that plan accordingly, you know, at the plan check stage if this is approved this evening, without trying to figure out how that would be designed tonight on the fly, so.
And so it's spaced out a little bit more because of the challenges of COVID? Is that kind of the reasoning why it comes out that far?
Well, that certainly was something that the applicant's representative or the property manager had said earlier, that they might want to make it a little larger to give a little more flexibility, you know, if COVID continues. So it might be that it's oversized, but, you know, I think at this stage, you know, if the commission is willing, I think we can work with the applicant and their team to try to... to try to design that correctly, and if there's a pedestrian walkability issue, we can incorporate a path and still meet ABC regulations for that barrier.
Yeah, I think it's something that the commission could come back to as well, right? I mean, if we're hearing that it's not working, then we can call for review from our own end to say we need to readjust that patio.
Yes, you certainly could do that. My thought is that if the design is inappropriate and is creating some issues with walkability of the center, I'm sure the property manager's going to be the first to know, and they'll be working with the tenants to try to relieve that, and my guess is it'll get resolved before it gets to the commission, but, you know, obviously, if there's any issues with this restaurant, we have the standard condition that allows the commission to call a use permit for review if there's really detrimental conditions going on out there.
Commissioner Ketting, you want to add anything to that? All right. I think the public hearing's still closed, right? We've re-
That's correct, yes.
Okay. All right. So if you want to have a motion by anyone, or? Commissioner Klostermeier?
I would just share that I do believe that the project that is put in front of us is well-thought-through. I think some of the concerns about parking are addressed with the parking study and especially with condition of approval number six. I would be supportive of the project as drafted.
Great. Do you want to do the motion? You want to have the honors?
Sure.
All right.
I will make a motion to approve the project as currently drafted, PA 2019-259 for the conditional use permit number UP 2019-059.
Great. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Call for the vote. Great, thank you. All right, we'll get our two commissioners back out here. They're having a party back there, or they're snacking up on some dinner? So our next item is the item number eight, Appointment of Commissioner for Circulation Element Update Outreach Effort. This is, site location is citywide, and this is a discussion item to appoint a planning commissioner to assist the outreach subcommittee of the Housing Element Update Advisory Committee in regard to the outreach effort for the circulation element. Staff, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Chair Wagon. You might recall that we discussed this issue at our prior meeting. Since that meeting, the city council has adopted a change to the Housing Element Update Advisory Committee's charge, and they actually took the circulation element officially out of their responsibilities, and they're directing it toward the planning commission. And what we had thought to do is that the overall outreach effort is, for both elements, is really being organized through the Housing Element Update Committee, and there's a subcommittee there. And our hope was is to kind of bridge the commission and the committee in terms of going over the outreach effort going forward, and so we had hoped that, to get an appointment of a commissioner. I know Mr. Ketting was willing to potentially participate if there wasn't any other commissioners wanting to do it, and so we hoped to appoint Mr. Ketting to that role this evening. And the role involves really just, you know, meeting with the outreach subcommittee, Ms. DeSantis and Ms. Stevens, and basically what we do is we go over the overall schedule and the outreach for, and the sequence of events, you know, we'll be doing a variety of virtual workshops and other study sessions, if you will, and then we go over the content and we discuss it and we get feedback, and then, you know, it's a fairly limited role, but it would be important to get some assistance here by the commission. We would hope that Mr. Ketting would come back to the commission and provide updates, but we'll also be doing updates at future meetings here as well. I want to be providing you discussion items on your agendas in the future, just so you know, we're planning an outreach effort in, excuse me, a virtual workshop in November as well as a planning commission study session at your second meeting in November to go over the circulation element to get ready to go on this one. So it's going to be happening fast and furiously. So I'm available for any questions that you might have, but again, the recommended action is simply just to do a motion to appoint Mr. Ketting to work with the outreach subcommittee, the Housing Element Update Advisory Committee. With Adam available for any questions.
Great, thanks, Jim, and thank you, Commissioner Ketting, for stepping up to that role. It is important for our city, and I think you're more than qualified to do it, so if you truly want to, we're going to put you on the spot here to confirm that you are, but we do, as a commission, I think, appreciate you stepping forward.
Well, if you want me to do it, I'll do it, and I won't just learn how to drive in circles.
Yeah, background check.
I'll make a motion to approve, Commissioner Ketting.
Any other staff discussing on it before I open it up to public comment?
That's not a hearing.
Okay, I'll open it to public comment. I think Mr. Mosher wants to comment on this item.
Chair Wagon, members of the planning commission, this is Jim Mosher. As we just heard, the primary function of the appointee is to help coordinate the public outreach. Page two of the staff report highlights, again, two events that will be coming up next month. First is a study session in which you're expecting the public, I guess, to come here and discuss something with you about the circulation element on November 19th. The other item, it says, which would be the main public outreach event, according to this, is coming up on Monday, November 23rd, a virtual workshop. Your next agenda item has a tentative schedule, also says it's coming up on Monday, November 23rd. I wanted to mention the main public outreach interface with the public is not the these meetings or the city website, but it's a separate website called Newport Together, and on that website, it has a homepage with a timeline. It's telling the public that that event is coming up on November 16th, which is the Monday before you were hearing about it. It also has a page called the circulation element page, does not mention the workshop at all, so it would be good to have the appointee as one of his first things to try to straighten that out, make sure when the workshop is happening, and that the public is consistently told a consistent date as to when it will be, which is not the case at the present time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. And also, I forgot to mention, if you do want to call in on this item, it is 949-270-8165. That's 949-270-8165. Is there anyone else in the community room? Anyone on the phone? We will give it just a second since I announced that fairly late, but I will ask staff just one question. When we do have commissioners do subcommittee activity, I know that there is a stipend that we, as commissioners, get of $60. Will Commissioner Ketting, and not to say that I need him to get $60, but for future reference, when commissioners are asked to participate in secondary committees, will they be compensated in the manner that we, as commissioners, are compensated for these meetings?
I honestly don't know the answer to that question. I don't think so, but it's for commission meetings, and so I'm not sure, but I can check and get back to you.
Just for the future, you know, I know that we don't get paid big bucks to do it, but I do think that all of us find some value in getting compensated for our time, and we do drive to these locations and spend some time to do it. It's not that we're trying to get paid and make buck off it, but reimbursed for their efforts of driving, I guess, could make sense. So maybe if staff could look into that for the council to approve subcommittees of the planning commission, that would be beneficial for future commissioners, and, you know, maybe you can suggest that they have some discussion on that. But anyone calling in? Okay. All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. I think we had a motion from-
I was going to say, I'll second Commissioner Almore's motion.
Perfect. All right. We'll call the vote. Commissioner Ketting approved himself. All right. He signed up for it, then. Okay, last couple items here is the, any motion for reconsideration? Commissioner Ketting has an opportunity one last time. And item 10 would be report by the community development director, a request for matters which planning commission member would like be placed on a future agenda.
Chairman, what I wanted to let everyone know about is our next upcoming meeting on November 5th. We have one item on the agenda. It's a larger project. It is called the residence at 4400 Von Carmen. It's that residential project that we were alluding to at the prior hearing, right across the street from the 5000 Birch restaurant that was just approved. We'll be bringing that forward to the planning commission at the next meeting. And I know Mr. Ketting wanted me to report on various projects that the commission has seen in the past, and I don't have a great presentation on that, other than I will tell you that the Vivante project, which was that senior housing project here in Newport Center, the permits were issued for that about a week and a half ago, I want to say, so that will be starting construction fairly soon. So that concludes my report.
Yes, Commissioner Lowry.
Just a quick question. For the city council meeting on the 27th, the second reading of ordinance for short-term lodging.
Yes.
Is that the one that we did not approve and it got approved, or is that the first version that we, that the one we didn't approve was referencing?
Yeah. Thank you, Vice Chair Lowry. So a little update on the short-term lodging. So the commission here had a recommendation of denial for specific ordinance and code change. Since that time that we went to the city council, we did a study session with the city council and asked them, what do they like to see with regards to short-term lodging? So they provided some direction to staff, and then we came back and introduced a new ordinance, and really, that ordinance was a cap of 1550 on the number of short-term lodging permits and a three-night minimum stay. That was already introduced a week and a half ago, and now it's coming for final adoption next Tuesday. If it's adopted, it'll go to the coastal commission for their consideration.
Any other commissioners with questions?
I did want to follow up with Tony on that parking, or I mean, that speeding issue in Dover Shores. Do you know if there's any update to that from the last time we talked, a month ago? If they did their petitions or if they got to the 70%? I think it was.
Yes, we did just receive the petitions yesterday, so we've got a full binder full of petitions, which we're going to go through. So I'm anticipating that we're going to pull something together. Been speaking with the resident that pulled all the petitions together about bringing it back to city council, I'm thinking in January.
Okay. So you have to count them, I guess, to verify that you get to 75%?
They go through everything.
Or 70%? Okay, thanks. All right. And I do need to allow the audience to comment on any of these. So is there anyone in the community room or on the line? Okay. Are you sure we need to speed this up any further, right? Item 11, excuse absence requests, anyone? Okay. All right, we're adjourned.